Good evening and welcome to the Easton Rent Control Board meeting of February 10th. Please note that this meeting is being televised. So at our last meeting on January 26th of the Rent Control Board, we were introduced to the new receiver for the Mobile Home Park. We talked about what was going on there and what the role of the receiver was. And we received, so in our packet is the written decision which recaps our conversation, the highlights of the receivership, and our comments on that. So we need to take a vote to approve this written decision. Connor, do you have anything you wanted to add to that?
No, if there's any technical questions, I would defer to Michael.
I'll just note this was drafted by Town Council. It was reviewed by the receiver and his attorney as well, in all were in support of the interim vote.
Okay.
So we have to vote to approve the written decision as presented?
Yes. Any questions?
None.
Any questions from the audience? All right, I entertain a motion.
Vote to approve the written decision as presented.
Second?
That's Craig and Tom, all in favor, unanimous. All right.
Dottie, if I could just quickly, before the one minute left before we go over here, I just wanted to vote, there's a copy in front of everyone on the board, the flyer. Health Director Kennedy noted this at your Rent Control Board meeting last time, that the Department of Health and Community Services would work to pull resources together and have basically a resource fair at Fotherham Hall on a Saturday this month to help the folks at the Mobile Home Park learn more about the resources that are available to them from state, federal, local, and nonprofit resources to help try to offset the necessary rent increase. And they've made good on that and gotten these materials to the folks of the park. And I just want to give a shout out to Kristin and to Mike, who are both, I think rightfully acknowledged by the receiver, Attorney Morrissey, for the extraordinary efforts they're making above and beyond their normal efforts to be supportive of this extraordinary pursuit by the board. So, thank you.
And so everyone at the park will get that?
Correct. It's gone to the Tenants Association through their council as well to be made available to them.
All right, terrific. We really appreciate that. I think that that's a great service to offer, and it'll be very helpful to the people that really need it. So, thank you very much, Michael and Kristin.
Agreed.
All right, if there's no other comment, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Craig and Tom, all in favor, unanimous. Thank you.
Dottie, we have 6:05 for your board meeting, so we need to.
Right, so for the audience, we have to start exactly at certain times when they're in our packet, so the next meeting for the Board of Selectmen, or the Select Board starts at 6:05, so we have two minutes to wait. It's a long, quiet two minutes usually. (whistling) (laughing) Now we have the Jeopardy song.
Is that, I'll get stuck in there? It's the other good one that people usually get stuck on, Kung-Fu Fighter. Whistle that, people usually get stuck on that.
I don't know that one.
Oh, I think you do.
We're on camera.
Right?
No fighting, boys.
I'll have to find it on YouTube or something, send it over.
Okay. Welcome to the Easton Select Board meeting of February 10th. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note that this meeting is being televised and broadcast on our local cable channel. The first order of business is Conservation Commission appointment. So before we go into the actual interviews, I just wanted to take a second to read the charge of the Conservation Commission for the board and for those at home. The Conservation Commission is responsible for planning for natural resource protection, acquiring important land and water areas, managing these priorities for natural conservation and passive recreation as set forth in the 1957 Conservation Commission Act, general law, Chapter 40, Section 8C, which authorized each city and town in Massachusetts to establish a locally appointed municipal agency to undertake these responsibilities. The Eastern Conservation Commission is also charged with the enforcement of two basic sets of laws. The Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, which is general law, Chapter 131, 740, which identifies and protects eight public interests served by wetlands. The protection of public and private water supply, the protection of groundwater supply, flood control, storm damage prevention, prevention of pollution, protection of land containing shellfish, protection of fisheries, protection of wildlife habitat. The Act requires that anyone wishing to perform work that may affect wetlands must first apply for and obtain written permission from the Conservation Commission, which administers this Act locally. Easton's local wetlands bylaw, Chapter 227 Wetlands Protection, and Chapter 503 Eastern Wetlands Regulation of the Town Code of Easton. The bylaw and its defining regulations were adopted to regulate activities deemed to have significant or cumulative effect on wetlands values, including the eight values contained within the State Act: erosion and sedimentation control and aesthetics. So I think that is very clear to people who understand a lot about conservation, and maybe others have questions, but hopefully the people who are the candidates have had a chance to review that. So for the first applicant, we have John Thomas. John, if you want to come up, just introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about what interests you in the Conservation Commission. Sure.
Sure. I'll turn the mic around towards you. Sure. Yep. Good evening. My name is John Thomas. I am currently a project manager and senior wetland scientist for SWCA, environmental consultants out of Westboro. I applied for this position. I saw there was a vacancy. The reason behind that is because I used to be a member of my Maynard Conservation Commission. I actually, once I moved to Worcester, I tried to apply to be a member there, but they didn't have a vacancy, and I informed them if they ever had a vacancy to get back to me. But since then, I've moved to Easton, currently here, saw that there was a vacancy, applied for this position. Currently, I work, you know, as a senior wetland scientist, deal with a lot of field delineations. I deal with a lot of permitting, commercial, private, gas, utilities. So I deal with a lot of environmental permits, not just at the state and local level, but also at the federal level. So that's really why I'm here, is to kind of just give back to the community. I enjoy doing it. I'm also a peer review consultant for a lot of other towns, so I feel like I could give a lot of information and free knowledge, I guess, to the town. So that's kind of why I applied to put this position.
Well, that's great. Have you looked at what nights the meetings are and if you're, if you have any trouble making the meetings?
I can, I can make the meetings, yeah. That's, I have a very flexible schedule, so I can definitely make the meetings.
Okay, terrific. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, John, a question about balancing wetlands protection and economic development, which the town of Easton is definitely in need of.
Okay.
Can you talk a little bit about how you balance when you make decisions?
How do I make decisions when it involves money? Well, I'm kind of a, I like to, I like to watch my money. So, I mean, if it's going to give value, like for instance, if we're going to be purchasing potential conservation parcels, I look at, for instance, are they contiguous with parcels that are already in town? And that really holds more value. So for an economic standpoint, I look for, you know, when am I going to get the most out of, for this piece of property? And, you know, I'm a big advocate for green spaces, and also I, when I was on board with Maynard, we did a lot of trail cleanup things with the Boy Scouts and stuff, so that's kind of where we kind of, kind of did some volunteer work with just the community as well. So economically, I don't really deal with the money side of things. I just try to do the volunteer stuff and try to make, make the environment better the best way I can with what I can give.
As, as a member of the Conservation Commission, you're going to have developers coming for you.
Right.
Asking questions about whether they can develop a particular piece of property.
Right.
How do you balance that concern about wetlands?
Oh, so with regards, with regards to the regulations and the setbacks and everything like that, if that's what you're referring to with the regulations for what they can do, for what's going to be economically for them, then, you know, they would need to look at those parcels specifically based on the certain setbacks, requirements, and potential, what they're actually trying to do for their, for their project. Whether it's a commercial building, whether it's an addition for a house, it all is going to come into a factor by a case-by-case basis, I think, if that answers your question.
Okay, thank you. Tom? The only question that I really had was when you said this peer review of other projects that interested me, because to your point, it might bring outside knowledge into our town.
Okay.
Could you give examples of some of your recent projects that you reviewed from a peer basis?
So recently, I've been working on a commercial project where they wanted to build a mixed-use apartment building slash commercial building. And the proponent was potentially putting it on a steeply-sloped parcel, and, you know, my concerns regarding the project mainly were the stormwater component of that. How are they going to alleviate a lot of these stormwater components that are going to be an, a factor on that property? Because there's going to be a lot of engineering that's going to go into this, there's going to be a lot of grading that's going to be going into this project. So there's a lot of different components from an engineering and stormwater perspective that they needed to account for, and that was kind of what I brought to the table for that one. Another project was, working recently, was a solar project, and they were proposing to, to put in a new access driveway through a wetland. And they didn't want to use their existing access road because it was used for a different facility, but they segregated both lots, so this lot was specifically for a different part of a separate project. So by right, you know, the, the applicant was allowed to do the work, but they were proposing 7,000 square feet of, of impacts. And I brought them down to get below the threshold of 5,000 square feet to accommodate the Act, to accommodate the bylaw, and to really try to get through this whole entire process a lot easier without the applicant actually having to file with, with the federal agencies and triggering NEPA review and going through all the other procedures. So it was kind of a, you know, a case study that we used as an example on, you know, this, this is kind of, it benefits both. It benefits the community as a whole, but it also benefits the client from an economic perspective, so it doesn't cost as much.
Good example of working with the economic aspect of it. Thank you.
Yep.
Great.
My questions were answered already. Thank you.
Okay. We don't take questions from the audience, but not to put you on the spot, Rory is on the Concom, so I didn't know, as a courtesy, I just wanted to invite you if you had a question or...
I'm good for now, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we appreciate you coming in to volunteer.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So the next applicant that we have is Timothy Popolo, and he, we have his resume in our packet, but he sent a note that I'll read on his behalf. "To the Eastern Select Board and residents, I send my regrets that I'm not able to appear in person to you tonight. I was unable to move work commitments on short notice. I would however like to pass along some information about myself. My name is Tim Popolo, and I am a lifelong Easternite and graduate of Oliver Ames High School. My childhood experiences at the Wheaton Farm summer camp have shaped my love for nature and inspired me to pursue a degree in biology focusing on wildlife at UMass Amherst. Since then, I've been a conservation professional, beginning locally as an employee of Borderlands State Park, later becoming a National Park Service Ranger, and currently working for the City of Cambridge's Water Department as a watershed protection ranger, and I am an active member of the MACC. Along the way, I gained some pertinent skills and certifications, such as that of a wetlands delineator. I have experience working closely with and presenting to conservation commissions in Massachusetts, and if I'm to be elected to this commission, I pledge to be a present and active member, and to use my specialized skills and knowledge of conservation best practices to make informed decisions that preserve Easton's natural character for future generations of caring residents. I thank you all sincerely for your time and for the careful consideration put into this process." So I really appreciate that. Tim sent that in to us, and we say this often, but with deep sincerity, it's really hard when we get excellent candidates, especially more than one for the same position. It's never an easy decision, so with, we thank all of our volunteers, and that's what makes things work here. So with that, does anybody, would anybody like to make a motion?
Yes. I would make a motion to, can I nominate to the motion?
You can make a motion to appoint.
I would make, I make a motion to appoint Mr. Thomas to the Conservation Committee, Commission.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
So that's Chuck and Craig, and this will be a roll call vote.
Brucead Popolo.
Bajra Thomas.
Bill Janetti Thomas.
King Thomas.
Okay, Mr. Thomas, congratulations.
Thank you.
You'll be notified by the town clerk of the next steps.
Okay, great, thank you.
And thank you to Mr. Popolo for also applying. Announcements and proclamations?
Sure, so I'm pleased to announce that the town of Easton was recently awarded a Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program Action Grant. So as the board might recall, our environmental planner, Andrea Langhauser, and a lot of members of the community worked through the Commonwealth's MVP program last year with grant money at that time, just shy of $40,000 there, to pull together a climate resiliency plan for the town of Easton, which was a great community-involved process. The next step of that is not just to have a plan that sits on a shelf, but it's to identify priorities, the things that we should be taking action on, and we are happy to announce that we will be receiving $177,620 to complete a wetlands restoration project, removing abandoned structures, which will restore a degraded stream channel, remove derelict farm structures, and restore a former wetland within a flood zone. This is a, just about a 10-acre work area on town-owned conservation land at Samrite Farm, within the Canoe River area of environmental critical, sorry, so many acronyms, within the Canoe River area of critical environmental concern. So this will basically help a wetland get brought back up to where it used to and needs to be in order to help with the hydrological cycle and reduce flooding, which is becoming more frequent as climate change worsens. So this is another successful grant application from our department heads. I thank Andrea Langhauser, who's currently serving as our interim planning director, for writing that. Dottie and I and Andrea joined the governor last week at a ceremony for those announcements in New Bedford, so it's very exciting. And part of the grant being made possible is Andrea committing her technical expertise as an in-kind contribution towards the program for matching funds. So, thank you.
Right, so this is a very competitive grant process, so for us to be able to get these kind of grants is, is really very good. So again, I appreciate it. Andrea, great job. People, I also appreciative that the town is really looking seriously about climate and the changes that are happening, and you don't really need to look further even than this weekend with the terrible storm we had. The wind has been more ferocious than ever in the past several years, and these, a lot of people think that climate change really only impacts the coastal communities, but these type of storms really impact communities like Easton, they have a lot of trees and open space also. So to be looking at how to mitigate problems with climate is really important, so thank you and keep up the good work.
Well done.
Thank you, Andrea.
Thank you, Andrea.
I'm hoping inviting you to the court team meetings.
We will be there. All right, next is a number of liquor licenses. So, excuse me. The Children's Museum, hold on one second. Paper on this, oh, here it is. So the Children's Museum, Night at the Brusium, a craft beer expo fundraiser, Nine Sullivan Ave, Northeast, and the event date is August 15th, 2020. The applicant, Amy Walsh, applied for a one-day beer and wine liquor license, and a police detail is required for this event. It's going to be on August 15th from 3:30 PM to 7:00 PM. And Amy couldn't be here tonight, but she sent a notice that she asked us to read. The Children's Museum of Easton is requesting a one-day liquor license, beer and wine, with a street closure from Sullivan Ave for the August 15th, 2020, to hold their seventh annual Night at the Brusium fundraiser from 3:30 to 7:00. This is a beer tasting event. The Children's Museum provides tasting glasses to attendees to sample beers, ciders, and occasionally wines from up to 20 breweries. Over the past six years, they've had tremendous support from the town of Easton, and will be securing the appropriate police and EMT details for the day of the event. They've been very fortunate not to have any incidents with alcohol or behavior. As we have in the past, we, they coordinated with Doug King, the Eastern Historical Society, and the YMCA to secure parking nearby. Additionally, they work with local restaurants to provide food the day of the event. Tickets will be on sale on the Children's Museum's website for $35. Funds raised through this event support the museum's mission of providing hands-on learning opportunities to children both here in Easton and in surrounding communities through the outreach programs. And I'll add that if you are interested and you want tickets, you should do it quickly because it usually does sell out.
Great event. Absolutely.
Tom, I believe you're, are you still on?
I am. I have, for four years now, participated as a supporter of this and been on the board of this event, and it is a fantastic event that sells out quick. It's one of the largest fundraisers that the Children's Museum does, and goes to do a lot of good, helping out the youth, not only of our town, but surrounding towns.
All right, great. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Absolutely, so moved.
Second?
All in favor? Unanimous. All right. The Jubilate Corral, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that appropriately, an Italian holiday fundraiser for the Jubilate Corral at Oaks Ames Memorial Hall. Susan Healy is here to present to that. They have applied for a one-day beer and wine liquor license for, thank you, a one-day beer and wine liquor license for an Italian holiday fundraiser event to be held on Saturday, April 4th, 2020, at Oaks Ames Memorial Hall, Three Barrows Street, from 7:00 PM to 11:00 PM. An Easton police detail is not required for this event. So please introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about the event.
Thank you, Dottie. Hi, I'm Sue Healy. I am the membership chair of Jubilate Corral, and Davis and I are both singers with the corral. I wanted to tell you a little bit about Jubilate Corral, in case you're not familiar with us. This is a local community choir made up of volunteer members from all over southeastern Mass. We have a staff of two, our conductor, Murray Kidd, and also our accompanist, Jim Hay. Typically, we have between 40 and 50 members in our group, with members ranging in age from high school students to retirees. We, we perform two concerts annually, in December and in May, at Christ Congregational Church in Brockton. Weekly rehearsals are on Monday nights at Unity Church here in Easton. Our concerts usually feature pieces by classical as well as modern composers. Our mission is to provide quality musical experiences for the community, and in doing so, share our own love of choral music. Our May 3rd concert this year is based on the theme "An Italian Holiday," and we will feature pieces by Italian composers, including opera choruses, love songs, as well as a few lighter pieces. One you might be familiar with that we're doing is "That's a Moray." I won't sing it for you. Our operating budget is dependent on membership dues, concert ticket sales, donations by sponsors and friends, and fundraising events, and we're also recipients of the Mass Cultural Council grants. We're trying something new this spring. On April 4th, Saturday evening, we're hosting a wine and food tasting event at Oaks Ames Hall in the gallery, bringing in a sommelier, how do you say? Sommelier, thank you. Erica Frye, to take us on a journey that will pair Italian wines and food courses. To add to the festivities of the event, our own Jubilate Corral members will be providing entertainment, featuring some of the choral music from our upcoming concert. Since this is a new venture for us, we're approaching it with moderation. We're selling 80 tickets at $75 each. We welcome all to the event, and tickets can be purchased by reaching out to one of our members or to our treasurer, Mark Momquist. His contact information is on the flyer that Davis passed around. No tickets are going to be sold at the door. Chief Sullivan reviewed our event plan and determined that we do not need a private police detail, as Dottie mentioned, due to the size of the event. Thank you for reviewing our request, and do you all have any questions?
No, I, I love the flyer. It's very well designed.
Thank you.
And sounds like a great event.
It's a draft. We don't have our Mass Cultural Council logo on there, so it's not...
Oh, okay.
...an official flyer yet.
Very good. All right, would somebody like to make a motion?
Absolutely. Go ahead. So moved.
Second?
So that's Craig and Tom, all in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please join us.
Next, Simpson Springs. Simpson Spring and Hopper Lane Beer Event at 719 Washington Street in Easton. The event date is February 29th, 2020. The applicant, Daniel Bertorelli, applied for a one-day beer and wine liquor license for a Simpson and Hopper Lane Beer Event. It'll be held on Saturday, February 29th, 2020, at Simpson Springs, 719 Washington Street, from noon to 5:00 PM. An Easton police detail is not required for this event. So does anybody have any comments or questions, or would like to make a motion?
I make a motion.
Tom and Craig, all in favor? Unanimous. All right, next, Stone Hill College. The applicant, Kelsey Pickering, applied for a one-day beer and wine liquor license for a benefactor in student scholarship reception and dinner, to be held on Sunday, April 19th, 2020, at Stone Hill College at the Atrium Shields Science Center, 320 Washington Street Northeastern, from 5:00 PM to 8:30 PM. An Easton police detail is not required for this event. Somebody would like to make a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Second?
Craig and Tom, all in favor? Unanimous. Stone Hill College, the applicant, Bridget Lawrence Meigs, applied for a one-day beer and wine liquor license for a campus farmer summit conference event to be held on Saturday, February 22nd, 2020, at Stone Hill College in the Martin Auditorium and Shields Petite Atrium, 320 Washington Street Northeastern, from 8:30 PM to 5:00 PM, is it 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM? I think there's a typo.
Sorry, which?
Is it 5:00 PM to 8:30 PM?
Stone Hill College.
It's the...
8:30 AM to 5:00.
8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. An Easton police detail is not required for this event. If somebody would like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Craig and Tom, all in favor? Unanimous. And next, another one for Stone Hill. The applicant, Christine DeCosta, applied for a one-day all-alcohol liquor license for a president's dinner, 2020, to be held on Thursday, May 28th, at Stone Hill College, the Sally Blair Ames Sports Complex, 320 Washington Street Northeastern, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. An Easton police detail is not required for this event.
Make a motion to approve?
Second?
Chuck and Craig, all in favor? Unanimous. Another one, last but not least, for Stone Hill College. Maureen Purcell applied for a one-day beer and wine liquor license for a funny-for-funds event to be held on Saturday, February 22nd, 2020, at Stone Hill College in the Alumni Auditorium, 320 Washington Street Northeastern, from 5:30 PM to 9:30 PM. An Easton police detail is not required for this event.
So moved.
Second?
Tom and Craig, all in favor? Unanimous. Okay. Next is the Department of Public Works, pavement management, three-year plan, and year-in, year-out.
Good evening. Let's hope this boots up nicely. All right, good evening. Dave Field, Director of Public Works, here to talk about our annual road paving program and what we did last year. So I'll just give a brief review of what pavement management is, review our, our work from last year, and then go over our recommended three-year plan, and then discuss the budget impacts with that plan. So I'll just give a brief review of what pavement management is, review our work from last year, and then go over our recommended three-year plan, and then discuss the budget impacts with that plan. So pavement management really simply is doing the right thing at the right time, in the right place, and doing it the right way. We use several different tools. Road surface rating is one of them, where each road is surveyed by an engineering technician, and the distresses are documented, the severity and prevalence of those distresses, and then generate a road surface rating for every section of public road in the town. We also look at traffic volumes for those roads, what repair methods are needed based on the road surface rating, our available budget, and then we use software product to help us calculate which roads we should be doing. So the road surface rating helps generate which repairs we do and different repair bands. So this chart, you can see, a new road is 100 RSR, doesn't need any work, it's very cheap, $0 required. Down to 0 RSR, road's basically impassable, it's no longer there, and that requires a more costly repair. Then you have the various repairs that fall in the middle.
Dave, how many square yards are in a mile? I feel like I should...
Oh, I don't have that offhand, but I could probably calculate that for you, but...
Fair enough.
I'll get that for you, sorry.
No, that's all right.
And then benefit value, this is the crux of what the program gives us, and we take every road section has our RSR. We know what repair cost is needed for that certain repair, what that life improvement of the repair will be, and then what the traffic level's going to be. And that really is where benefit value comes into play. So looking at last year's repairs for fiscal year 2020, we were able to do $730,000 worth of repairs on about 15 miles of roadway. Our current RSR is 73, and our current backlog is $19 million. So if you recall last year, you see in the blue is the routine, that's crack sealing and various patching we've done. That's a routine maintenance item. Our preventative maintenance item, which we did on Highland Purchase and Central, is shown in yellow. And then our Millen overlay is shown on Pine Street and Hill and High. And so that was basically our plan. We intended to do Pond Street as well, reclamation on Pond Street, but when we dug into the design, we determined that we needed to do a little more work there. We needed to replace a water main before we could really go and do that road over responsibly, and we also needed a retaining wall. So we're working on those two items right now. We hope to get the retaining wall in this spring, and we're going to town meeting for funds for the water main project, and we've moved that Pond Street repair into next year's repairs. Are there any questions on what we've done or why we've done it? I can get into the impacts and budgets later, but just, this was last year's plan. Did anyone have any questions on it? Yes?
So assuming a 30-foot road width, Tom, there's 17,600 square yards in a mile of road.
17,600.
600.
600.
Square yards in a mile of road.
Yeah, the average road in Easton's probably closer to 24 feet, but that's, yeah, but yeah, appreciate that.
So 80% of that number then. And then, Dave, just for the board of Republic, when you say you dug into design on Pond and there's a water main project, what you're saying there is that because there's utility work underneath the road, that what is the normal practice for DPW to be smart with the spending that you have for roads is if you're going to be doing a sewer or a utility project underground, you want to do that first and then throw a new road on top of it, rather than pave a new road and have to open it in two years.
Exactly. So our pavement management program gives us the initial screening. It uses planning level numbers for the repairs, and then we dig and teach one of those. And sometimes we'll change a repair from a certain repair to another repair, maybe a more in-depth repair or a lesser repair, because we find the conditions are different. We do cores on the asphalt, figure out the asphalt level, and figure out what we can do. So sometimes we've gone where a road has reclamation recommended. We've done some alternative repairs, like a Samien overlay, which we did on Julie Road a couple of years ago. So our initial screening said Pond Street was going to be up, and then we started getting to design. We determined that the retaining wall, and then we really should do that water main prior to doing the road responsibly, so.
So at the, at your rate, I took your 17, 600, 80% for 24-foot wide instead of 30-foot, at a $32 reclamation, it's basically half a million dollars to do a mile worth of reclamation.
Yeah, and I have an exact example of that coming up.
Ever need backup, put these slides together, I'm your guy.
I appreciate that, thank you.
But I think it just goes to show, though, that a lot of money doesn't go too far, given how much mileage we have.
Exactly. You'll see that a little later, a couple of slides. You know, some of the routine maintenance is $0.80 a square yard, and we can do, we do a lot of routine maintenance, and that's needed. It's your biggest bang for the buck. Then our preventative maintenance, we're doing that at $8 a square yard. We're actually been bringing it a little lower than that, around 7, but we use 8 for a planning number. So that, we can do a lot of preventative maintenance, and that's basically keeping good roads in good condition. Once we start getting down to that backlog of roads that are kind of failed, it's very expensive. So that's been our issue, and I think we'll see that in a little bit, that we've been able to do a lot and keep our really good roads in good condition. There's a consequence to not doing that, and now we have what we're going to see more of is roads that are basically failed. There's really no consequence in doing the, not doing a failed road, because it stays failed. It's where you miss a repair band, and you go from routine maintenance, and you skip over a couple and go down too low, wait too long, that's an opportunity cost you've missed. So again, we'll see that in a second, but we definitely have some funding issues coming up.
So our current backlog is 19 million?
Yeah, and that's been consistent since we've, it's been between 19, 18 million each year since we started this program. We just really haven't been able to dig into that backlog at all.
And Dave, that's because just keeping status quo costs 1.1 million, roughly?
Yeah, 1.4. Depends on which method you look at, and we'll talk about that, but between 1 and 1.4 million dollars.
We'll let you finish. We're eager to ask all these questions.
I'm jumping ahead, so I apologize.
Sorry about that.
So one of the things we've been trying to do is do the right repairs at the right time and do it the right way. So we're trying to use innovative paving wherever we can. We do utilize SuperPave mixed design. We've done that for several years. We use quality assurance specifications. We require density testing, cores, and correlated non-destructive testing on all of our pavement that's put down, to make sure that gets the, density is the biggest indicator on the quality of pavement, to make sure the contractor's giving us what we deserve and what's going to last. A road that's not, doesn't, isn't constructed properly and doesn't have the density will not last as long, so by our specifications, we won't pay the contractors as much for it, or even anything, if it's too far gone. We've been lucky, we've had good contractors that have been very reputable, and they've hit the 92 and 95% compaction that's required, so they've gotten their full payments. We haven't had to withhold any here. I have done that in the past in other places. But again, that's a very important thing, is to have quality assurance specifications. The contractor will actually bring out someone, test it, and then we bring out someone, an independent person, to test as well.
What, oh, sorry. I was just going to ask, what's SuperPave mix?
So SuperPave is just a different way of mixed design. It's been around for a while, but it, MassDOT is fully implemented mixed, SuperPave. It's just, it's what it says, it's a superior performing asphalt pavement. It's just a different method to use, the way they mix it, the way it's compacted, the way it's tested. So it's tested to simulate wheelloads, and so you have an end value that goes on expected amount of truck traffic over the time. So instead of just mixing in a recipe bowl, what we used to call a Marshall mix, and say, that's our mix, doesn't matter what type of stone I put in there, or what characteristics, you look at the individual characteristics of the stone, the aggregate, in the binder, and you simulate it and see how it performs. And then you do more testing than usually was done previously, stripping and things like that, to make sure that's going to last.
David?
Yes?
The picture on the left indicates, on the left of that picture, a streaking kind of treatment that the town gives. Is that a temporary kind of thing, going to lead on to something else when we have more money, or could you explain that?
So that's the, that's the crack sealing you see on that picture on the left, the left lane. That's an overlay, I think that's Bay Road. We did that a couple of years ago. So we're just doing a conventional overlay on that road. That's, the crack sealing is our first line of defense on any road. So anytime we see cracking, we want to put a crack filler down to prevent water from getting into our road system, and that freeze thaw in the water really deteriorates the road really rapidly. So we want to make sure we keep our roads watertight and keep that in good shape.
And there's no prediction of when and if it ever becomes fully redone such as...
No, it really has no prediction on that, because this is probably a road with a repair band level of 70 at the time this was paved, that picture was taken. And we'll start crack sealing something when it gets to about a 90. We'll start crack sealing it all the way down. And even sometimes we crack seal a road that may be further down the curve, that we're just trying to preserve, because we know we can't get to it, we don't have the funds for it. Crack sealing's still a very cheap way to try to keep a road in good shape. So we use this on a wide range of roads, and we use that technique under our preventative maintenance as well. So the roads we're going to talk about for preventative maintenance, the first step we're going to do is go out there and crack seal it, and then we're going to go over it with a preventative coat over it.
Okay.
And Dave, so although some folks don't necessarily like the aesthetics of crack sealing, that's actually the smartest thing we can be doing to try to keep a road functionally healthy for as long as possible.
That's correct. I mean, it's not, you know, aesthetically appealing, we understand that, but it's a very important road to keep your network in good shape. And then we also use warm mixed asphalt. That's an asphalt that's produced at a lower temperature with modifiers, so we don't have to heat the asphalt up as much, we don't waste greenhouse gases, and we don't volatileize the bituminous binder and cook off the best parts of the mix. We keep that in the road itself. So warm mix is a very, very effective tool for us as well. So just looking at the repairs since we've started, we've touched a lot of roads. You can see, like, mostly, mostly, I'm sorry, all of our collectors and major and minor collectors have been touched. We haven't got into a lot of subdivision roads, as you can see, but we've pretty much touched all our main roads. And over the last six years, we've done $7.2 million worth of work on 115 miles of roadway, and we're averaging about $900,000 a year. So it's not a bad thing. We're not doing bad, but we're probably not doing as much as we need to, and we'll go over that in a little bit. So looking at our plan going forward, our next three-year plan, we have to look at what our anticipated funding's going to be. That's crucial when you're looking at a limited budget scenario. We're going to use our Chapter 90 funding as we have in the past. We usually have about $500,000 a year to spend on our roadway network, and then we'll utilize our available local borrowing. We haven't, we borrowed last in FY '20, a half a million dollars. We do have that available going forward this year, primarily because Pond Street got delayed. So for fiscal year '21, we anticipate $1.1 million in funding, and then in '22 and '23, conservatively, we are estimating a half a million dollars available in funding, because I don't know if that's in the cards for additional borrowing at this time. If we do get it, then we'll reprogram those outlier years. We do a three-year program, so we can project, give it to our utility partners like Columbia Gas, National Grid, look at our water issues, we look at where we patch potholes, we look where we have water main breaks, we screen all that together to try to come up with a three-year plan that's responsible. But if we do get additional funds, we can add in roads as we retweak this plan going forward. So what does our three-year plan look like? We have, we're proposing $2.2 million worth of road improvements, and I'll go through each one individually. And the reason why we're proposing a little more than the 2.1 we've said is just based on our design numbers. We have been able to bring them in lower, and we have some roads that we just can't fit in the $500,000, or they're a little over, so when you put them all together, we're a little higher, but we do believe we'll be able to get these done. So in '21, it's primarily preventative maintenance, our ultra-thin bonded overlay, like we did last year on Highland Street in Purchase. We'll be doing that on Massapog, Eastman Turnpike, a portion of Sheridan, the top portion of Sheridan, and a portion of East Elm Street that wasn't done with the other section going towards Brockton. We're also going to be doing reclamation on Pond Street, as I mentioned, and then some various routine maintenance. And that's not an overly impressive graphic. We're not touching a ton of roads, but it is not a bad plan. This is where it gets a little scarier in '22, and in '23, really limited amount of roads. As you said, Tom, you know, it doesn't go far. Half a million dollars doesn't go far. So we basically get Blackbrook Road done, and then in '23, we're looking at a small piece of Cranberry, Cranberry Lane down to the south, King Arthur Road, just a little portion of it, and Pleasant Heights Drive. So we, all these subdivisions are all basically in the same condition. We're using benefit value to screen that and pick out the ones that are the highest, but we really could, you could really just pick them out of a hat. They all need to be done. We have subdivision roads that were constructed primarily at the same time, and have the same lifespan, and are kind of in the same condition. So we have a huge backlog that it's going to take a while to really address at this funding level. So pavement management helps us to prioritize what we need to do, but it also helps us to look at what we should be spending. So as I alluded to, we'll go through that now. So we have two methods. One is the pavement management program itself. We use a program, it's a little more rudimentary than I would like, but it is effective. This is just straight-line deterioration. It says if you have a road at this condition, it's going to lose at this rate. Some programs have a little fancier curves to them, where it's a more of a polynomial curve, but these are straight-line deterioration curves. But what this shows us, if we spent zero in that red line, if we spent $0 going forward, our RSR would drop from 73 down to close to 70 in five years. So we definitely go down. The $1 million funding level gets us to pretty much stay even. It shows us a little uptick, but just about even at 73 in five years. And let's say if we were able to go $2 million a year in green, we'd make an improvement to just over 76 in five years. So that just shows you the range of, you know, outcomes based on what level of funding we put into it. The next is another simple way to do it, but it's a little more in-depth, and the fact that gives us, I think, a little better number. This is a mile-year analysis. So every year, we have 117 miles of road, they get 117 mile-years older. So we lose 117 network years on our roads. So we have to put life extension into our roads, so a life extension for crack sealing would be two, two years a mile, and if you're in doubt to reclamation, at 20 years a mile. So, or mile-years, I should say. So looking at what we did last year, we put in 69 mile-years into our system, but we lost 117 for a net loss of 48 mile-years. Looking back at the six years, I believe we're losing on average 29 miles a year. So we're just not quite there. FY '16, we were able to actually gain, but pretty much every other year, we've been losing. And what this comes down with is a cost per mile number of, an average cost per mile of $12,000 per mile, and we know to get to 117 mile-years, we need to be spending 1.45, $1.4 million to stay there.
And Dave, just for the board, board's edification, fiscal '16 is the only year up there that showed a net gain, and that year was an anomaly, because not only did it have the half-million-dollar annual borrowing, which we have been saying for quite some time now, we're going to eventually taper off, because we can't afford to keep doing it endlessly. That was also a year where there was a supplemental release of Chapter 90, where Chapter 9 was 300 million that year instead of 2, right? So we had 50% more state money to work with, and we also had the local funds. And so Chapter 90, we've been relying on forever, and it has, for all intents and purposes, been mostly level-funded for...
Years. I don't have that number off the top of my head, but it's been years.
Many, many, many. And the MMA routinely looks at this, and I think the most recent number I saw was their estimate of what an adequate Chapter 90 bill would be. It would be closer to 650 million on a statewide level, and we continue, and the governor's budget proposal for fiscal '21 continues the 200 million level.
Yes, so that's exactly right. And so this is just another graphic showing what we've spent in the past and looking forward over the next three years, and then that target funding level from the mile-year analysis, we're just not there, there's a gap. And, you know, if we don't hit that gap, you know, if we don't get our funding level up to that gap, our road service, level of service will decline. It's unfortunate, but it's the facts. So in summary, I don't want to sound... So, in summary, I don't want to sound all doom and gloom. We are doing the right things. We're doing a good program. Our level of service has kind of hung pretty steady for a while, although we've dropped now. We started with a seventy-four. We started in two thousand thirteen, we're at a seventy-three, so we have dropped. Work has primarily been on our main roads. We have a significant backlog, and they're primarily those subdivision roads that are already in failure mode, need to be reconstructed. And without additional local funding, it's going to be difficult to get into those roads and make those improvements. Be happy to answer any questions you have or talk about the plan or strategies.
Well, before I was elected, I never heard of any of these things. I never thought I'd know so much about pavement management. And it comes in handy because this is one of the most common questions that we get from people in town, are when are you going to get to my road or questions about it. So, we're able to answer, based on your excellent presentations, to be able to at least speak to some level about it. But we also have a lot of information about this, including the map and the estimates of when roads are going to be done, right on the website for transparency. So, appreciate you going into detail on this. It's very helpful to us. I hope a lot of people watch this at home tonight. You know, it's not the best of news, but you do a great job with what you have, and that's all we can do.
Yeah, because the thing we don't talk about here in this presentation is we will continue to patch, and we do some things within our operating budget. We'll rent a paver, we'll do a little milling. On roads we know we can't get to, but we have to because we're just spending money and we're out there day after day patching potholes. So, we did some of that last year. We've done that a couple of years before. So, we are going to earmark some money to try to get out there and do some temporary repairs to try to limp along in some of those roads. But that is the number one question I receive is when's my road getting paved? And when a person calls and says, "My road should be paved. It hasn't been paved in thirty or forty years," I agree with you. And I can tell them, well, it's rated this, and it's this far down in the queue as far as benefit value and cumulative cost. And when I'm done, they usually understand. They're usually not happy, but at least they understand it so that we're not just arbitrarily just, you know, picking roads and we're trying to stretch our dollars to be the most effective we can. But it's hard.
I genuinely believe that you do everything you possibly can in your team and the department as a whole with the constraint being the resources that are provided to you candidly. As a matter of fact, I think the fact that we're at a seventy-three from what began as a seventy-four is Herculean and reflective of that effort. I think that this is a case of under-investment, candidly. I look at our roads as a fundamental, you know, it's a component of our town that I think when it goes too far is going to end up costing us materially more. I think to your point, if these roads get to the shape where they become all reclamation, I'm not saying they will, but that would be a thirty-two-dollar verse, the cost of maintenance, which is there. I also have heard from town residents, probably not as much as you have, but I have, even to the point where they express concern about the state of their roads as they go to sell their home, which is usually people's number one investment in their life. And seeing some of the streets and the secondary roads that are around me at least, that I walk on a regular basis, I can identify with what they say. I think that they are in the best shape that they could be, given the resources that we have. But I feel from my perspective, I would like to find a way to get you more resources. I look at this as a capital item that should be supported with investment, much like a homeowner would take care of their roof to avoid the house from being challenged. I think the roads also need to fundamentally be taken care of. And I would like to see more investment in this area, not less, over time. I know that comes with it all the other challenges of having an incredibly tight budget and not having enough capital dollars to do the projects that we want. But I think that from what you laid out on that trajectory, it seems like we will be regressing, not getting better, based upon the current projection of spend. That's my takeaway. And that I think it's important we start to get better, not worse. And so, I know from my perspective, I think that's very important to support, and I'll continue to look for ways to do that. The question that I do have, a couple of questions, of the nineteen million that is backlogged, how much of that is related to secondary roads?
Almost all of it. So, anything that comes up for preventative has a higher, or routine has a higher benefit value. So, those lighter repairs, those higher-on-the-curve repairs are all been recommended already. So, this program, this pavement management program, again, it's a little more rudimentary than others. It's effective for us, and we can use it, but it doesn't run us multiple scenarios. So, if we have a road coming, like right now, I look at Foundry Street going towards Norton. That road, it doesn't screen right now as needing preventative maintenance. It's had routine maintenance several times. But probably next year, that's probably going to be at the point where it's going to pop up in the preventative maintenance queue again, and we'll have to get that programmed in because we don't want to lose that. So, we have roads that are in good shape right now in that ninety-to-one-hundred band that'll start falling into our preventative again. So, right now, a snapshot in time, most of our roads are the subdivision roads that are causing that backlog. But we have some roads that will then appear as they deteriorate, as they get older. Roads we've done in the last ten years will start needing to be done again. So, then they'll start appearing on the curve. So, it's not, a snapshot in time, it's the secondary roads that are the biggest problem right now are subdivision roads, but that's not going to stay that way. It should be a healthy bell-shaped curve, basically of good and bad roads. You should have a little of everything. Right now, our snapshot is really weighted towards the bad side.
And if we had to classify the nineteen million by type, be it preventative or all the way to reclamation, is the majority of the nineteen million in reclamation?
Yeah, reclamation.
And so, in essence, if I could, the takeaway I feel is that those secondary roads are reclamation, they are the majority of the nineteen million. And the reality is that the other roads that are in good shape will deteriorate, therefore taking up our funding on a go-forward basis because, to your point, that is the best, I shouldn't say best, that is the largest bang or return is taking care of those primary feeder roads, keeping them in relatively decent shape. I just think we have to do more, candidly. I know that's hard, and I don't have the solution, and I'm not a fan of raising the concerns, but I just think we need to do more or we'll have a larger challenge fundamentally on our hands as time goes on. And so, for one, as we go through the budget process, we'll continue to look for additional resources for this, and I'm sure there are many capital needs that we need to continue to support.
There are. Tom, if I could just add to that, your questions are, they're accurate. And I think Dave and I spoke about this, obviously, before this presentation was coming. There is no mistake. This is regressive. That's quite clear. I mean, we've put a number on it for folks, but this, we know that. We're not happy about it either. But the matter of fact is that the half million that we were borrowing annually was a stop-gap kind of approach from many, many years ago in light of the then probably six- or seven-year-old structural revenue deficit that's now thirteen years old. And one of the things that was inspiring the 2016 discussion about an override was this reality that we don't have enough recurring revenue to support these things. So, everything we're talking about here is, you are right. We should all want additional resources for that, but the fact of the situation is that this was never something that was intended to be a half million borrow every single year that we could sustain because Dave could give a similar presentation about the borrowing levels necessary for building maintenance.
Basically, any asset we have, I could...
That's right. So, I...
I agree.
I'm concurring on the event. This is, it's not a good situation, but it's one we've been forecasting for a few years coming now that... And we'll talk more, obviously, in my budget presentation. There are some bright spots in what we're doing, but, I mean, fundamentally, there's only so much we can do.
Understood. And again, just to end with, thank you so much to you and the team for doing what you do get done with the limited resources we provide you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, we have a couple of quick ones. We have an acceptance of a resignation from the Easton Shovel Town Cultural Management District Partnership Team. Two resignations. One of them is from Jonathan Coe. To accept the resignation, we need to do a motion, a second, and a roll call vote. So, if somebody would like to make a motion to regretfully accept the resignation of Jonathan Coe and...
So moved.
Second? Roll call. Bruceard Coe?
That was Craig and Tom.
Bruceard Coe?
Fager Coe.
Full Genetti Coe.
King Coe.
And the next one is a resignation from Inez Smers, also from the Easton Shovel Town Cultural District Management Partnership Team. A motion and a second.
So moved.
Second?
Craig and Tom.
Bruceard Smers?
Fager Smers.
Full Genetti Smers.
King Smers.
And we thank Inez also for her time in accepting her resignation regretfully. The next up is a board and committee update for the Affordable Housing Trust Board. And just while Wayne's getting up to the seat, we're trying to get pretty frequent with this to get board updates from our boards and committees. It's really important to hear about the exciting work that they are doing and let the people at home know about all these things that are going on. It's hard sometimes to manage to get all the committees to come forward because they're busy. So, we really appreciate you being here tonight, Wayne.
Thanks, Wayne.
Hi, thanks, everybody. I'm Wayne Bittler, community planner. I'm staff support for a variety of programs and commissions here in town. One of them is the Affordable Housing Trust. The chair, Nikki Desdumian, sends her regrets. She works in Boston. Five of the seven members are working mothers with very young children. So, no one could make it tonight except me and Mr. King. So, please feel free to, at the end of each slide, ask any questions that are project-specific, and then we can have a longer exploratory conversation, if you want, about some details at the end. So, the Affordable Housing Trust was founded at Town Meeting in two thousand eight. It's a seven-member volunteer board. The mission is fourfold: develop, preserve, and advocate for housing opportunities for a broad range of income levels. It's not just very low income. It's also workforce housing is a very important component of what the trust does. It promotes housing choice in Easton so that people who want to live in, move to, or stay in Easton have options. It helps eliminate discrimination in housing and increase awareness of fair housing laws. And it takes a leadership position in affordable housing development and planning for fair and affordable housing. As background, and I know this group has touched on it in the past, the median single-family purchase price for a single-family home in Easton is about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so, the trust is very challenged to create affordable housing at a reasonable and sustainable price point. We've done several projects quite recently, and several are ongoing, and I'm happy to run through them and... Magic. So, one of the big, long-term ones we've been working on is a formerly town-owned property at three hundred Foundry Street. At Town Meeting, a special Town Meeting in 2016, the trust got permission to de-accession that property, which has some significant development challenges to fulfill a local need for housing, affordable housing, for folks with intellectual disabilities. The trust did some site engineering, perk testing, wetlands delineation, and so on, issued an RFP, had a couple of good responses. And the winning response is from a local regional group called the Brockton Area Multi-Services Incorporated, BAMSE. And they will be putting in a affordable group home with eight bedrooms for individuals with acquired brain injuries. That picture is of a property of theirs in Worcester. So, it's going to look somewhat like that when it actually happens. Like I said, it's going to be eight bedrooms. There was a lot of site work involved, and the Affordable Housing Trust has made a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant to BAMSE to help with the incredibly expensive site work that's needed there. That project transferred to BAMSE January second of this year. And folks may remember how very long it took to get a lot of the paperwork in good shape to get that done. They're going through permitting now and to help keep the project affordable to the nonprofit developer or the nonprofit service provider and owner. Our land use agent is essentially being peer reviewed so that they don't have to pay for peer review for the conservation issues. And the building department has confirmed that they can waive a lot of the construction permit fees. So, does anyone have any questions about the three hundred Foundry Street project?
I'd just like to make a point that for people at home, or just a refresher, the state requires cities and towns to have ten percent of their housing stock deemed as affordable according to what their affordable designation is. And so, for these eight units, all eight will go towards our subsidized housing inventory, creating eight units more of affordable housing, all of them. So, that's really, really a great use of funds.
Yeah, thank you for that.
And it's a great opportunity to help people that really need that type of housing.
There's a real critical need for it. And, you know, touching back to the trust's work to try and keep things as cost-effective as possible. As Doti mentioned, each bedroom counts towards our forty-B requirements. And each, so it's about forty-four thousand or so per unit, about forty-four thousand dollars roughly. And again, I think it's helpful to compare all of these numbers with the median single-family purchase price in Easton of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Yeah, yeah. The next... So, the trust looked at some peer towns and did a pilot project based on one that's been fairly successful in Norfolk. So, in 2018, the trust bought a single-family house, and it ended up needing more work than the inspection had initially indicated. So, the trust replaced the roof, the windows, upgraded some electricity. Excuse me, there was a number of other things that needed to be done. The trust carried it over the winter, which was fun. And carried out a lottery, marketed it and had a lottery, and sold it at an affordable price to a qualified buyer in September of 2019. So, that has created one unit of affordable family housing. And at the end of all of that, it was about a two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar net investment from the trust. So, we carried it for about one and a half years. One of the challenges was the public construction procurement requirements, trying to get some of the work done. And also, and this is true everywhere, it's actually really hard to get contractors to do work. So, there were not folks really lined up to get the work done, so that was a bit of a challenge. And the trust is sort of doing a project debrief to, you know, contemplate if this is the sort of project we'd want to do again in the future. But at the end of the day, we have an affordable family home for a family that actually already lived in Easton at the time.
There's an incredible need for that. I was there the day that they had the open house for people to come in and take a look at it, and the cars were lined down the street, and they actually ran out of applications that day. So, there are so many people in need of housing right now in our own community. Like you say, these are people that lived in Easton. I think that's a huge success story, and it's very hard to do, make the numbers work on a project like that in Easton because there's not a lot of houses available at a price point that you can buy that and make a smaller investment.
And Wayne, that ultimately ended up being sold to a qualified buyer. Do you know what was the sale price?
We sold it very low, at one sixty.
Right, but think about what an incredible and non-existent opportunity that is in the market, right, for folks who, to Doti's point, already live here and just need a quality home. And the average house, four fifty. I mean, that's median. If you pull Zillow up, you know, God help you. So, I agree that it's a wonderful success.
Yeah, thank you. And again, this is also workforce housing. Folks who buy affordable homes have to have a mortgage and an income to support that mortgage. So, it helps support local workers and local businesses. So it helps support local workers and local businesses. Folks may remember this one. This is 10 Electric Avenue. And this was a three-plus year, and emphasis on the plus. It was, I've been given to understand, longer than that. So this was a small parcel that was in tax title. And the town owned a previous tax title parcel right next to it. And it's at least a two-year process to get a property through the tax title process and into town ownership. And it took the trust quite a while to get that done. Did some site engineering, of course, before we really started that, to make sure it was in fact developable. Flowed the wetlands, got a perk test. Put out an RFP for a nonprofit developer to create a unit of affordable ownership housing. The property transferred to Habitat for Humanity in March of 2019. They had a groundbreaking in October that I think some folks were able to attend, so they did some site clearing. They have a partner family, which includes someone who actually works in the Easton schools at the moment. So they're very excited about that. And they will start construction when the weather gets a little more mild later on this year. And in addition to the effort of bringing it to the point where it could be developed and doing the site work, the trust also provided a $30,000 grant for Habitat, which of course, as folks know, is volunteer and donation-driven. So this is a pretty exciting model with a really great nonprofit development partner. And they did a lot of outreach in Easton, and it seems to be quite well-received with a lot of public support in town. So we're pretty excited.
How many Habitat homes is that that we have now?
I think this will be our third, possibly fourth.
Okay.
Yeah. The trust did one on Highland at the very beginning of my tenure. That was several years ago. And there's one, if not two, others in town.
Terrific.
Yeah, they do really great work, and they're just a joy to deal with.
Like you said, they are a very good partner.
Yeah, yeah, they're wonderful. And folks may remember, so this is 10 Morse Road. And there's a larger property that's in Chapter 61A, which is a property tax program for agricultural land or open space land to not be taxed at its full development level so that it can stay in, say, agricultural production or forestry production or recreation, you know, like a day camp or something like that. So this was 61A agriculture. When a property comes out of 61A, the town has a right of first refusal to buy it for a bona fide signed purchase and sale. So the larger parcel was divided out and created two new upland zoning-compliant frontage parcels with good perk tests and engineered septic systems on them. The trust explored, you know, trying to acquire both or at least one. The trust has funds to buy one and worked with the select board. And thank you, the select board decided and voted in December of 2019 to exercise the town's right of first refusal on one of the parcels. The trust is providing the $220,000 purchase price, will also make a grant available for development. Will be issuing an RFP for a nonprofit developer to build one or two units of affordable family housing on that parcel. We are on track to close in late February, after which we'll put out that RFP for a nonprofit developer to respond. So we're pretty excited about this one. It's, you know, to the point we've touched on several times in the past, it is incredibly hard to get a zoning-compliant upland frontage parcel that you can develop easily. They're really difficult, especially for 220. We got an appraisal, and it came in higher, so it definitely justified that purchase price.
It's also incredibly difficult to find a nonprofit development corp that is willing to come out and build only one or two units of affordable housing. Usually they're building, you know, a much, much bigger places, so...
And that has been a sort of meta-challenge for Easton. The financing and the nonprofit institutions are looking at 20- and 40-unit developments, which is great, and it's great projects at scale, but there are few places in outer suburban towns where that is really workable. So it is, to Dottie's point, very hard to get a developer to build small-scale affordable housing. Our next project, this is 26 Piquanica Avenue. The select board, again, thank you, approved the trust's acquiring this vacant property from the housing authority for $235,100. We got an appraisal back, and it's below the appraised value. The housing authority has been trying to rehab this semi-derelict building for many years, but again, to the procurement and prevailing wage requirements, costs were coming back at about $800,000, which is unfeasible. Yeah, yeah. So the housing authority has very few actual family housing units in its portfolio in Easton. So they got state permission to de-accession the property and combine it with a small state grant they already have, and use the proceeds to buy an existing home in good repair as a replacement unit. And the Affordable Housing Trust will acquire this, demolish this pretty derelict cabin, and put out an RFP for a nonprofit developer, again, to build one or two units of affordable family housing, again, with a $30,000 grant from the trust for the site costs. This is scheduled to close by mid-February, after which the trust will do the demolition and then issue the RFP. So again, it speaks to the difficulty in getting, building lots in town and doing small-scale developments. We also have a down payment assistance grant program for low-income first-time home buyers. What it is, is essentially, the way to think of it, is the town is buying a permanent affordability restriction on a market-rate housing unit. So an income-qualified first-time home buyer would combine a significant down payment grant from the trust with a qualifying mortgage, buy a market-rate house or condo. It converts to affordable, can only be sold in the future, to an income-qualified household. And the grant is 35% of the purchase price or $95,000, whichever is lower. And again, keeping in mind Easton's median market-rate home price of $450,000. The trust issued one grant this past June for $70,350. We have two viable applications under review at the moment. And since the trust started this program several years ago, they've done six grants totaling about $400,000. So these are the actual sort of unit creation projects we've done. The trust has spent or committed about $1.2 million in the last several years to create at least 13 units. If some of these could be redone as two families, that might be 15. So it's 13 units for about $1.2 million, current or recent. So that's a little more than $91,000 per unit. So it's the trust's work to create different opportunities, different housing choices, with a focus on incredibly scarce, affordable, single-family homes. So that is a quick summary of what the trust has done recently and is doing at the moment. We also have a few other things that we're working on. So the trust is responsible for updating Easton's housing production plan. Our current one, they're good for five years. It's started in February of 2017, so it's good through January 31 of 2022. We submit annual reports to the state. As you know, Easton has several creative and forward-thinking smart growth and development districts. Acqueeset Commons, the 4DR Smart Growth District, the Northeastern Village. The Shovel Works was developed partly with a tax increment finance district. The town has to submit annual reports on that. The trust also researches and applies for and administers housing-related grants. Recently, the town got a housing choice capital grant. The town received housing choice designation from the state for proactive workforce housing creation. This allowed the town to apply for and receive a capital grant, which we applied towards the design costs for the Five Corners Sewer Expansion. So that's coming up for renewal, and we're intending to reapply in the next month or so. And then the trust also works towards Easton's 40B subsidized housing inventory. So 40B is a state law from 1969 that suburban towns need to have 10% of their housing units restricted affordable to households making 80% or below the area median income, which in Easton, I think, is about $75,000 for a family of four. So again, it's workforce housing. And if a town does not have 10% or are making substantial progress towards 10%, a developer can override local zoning and, as long as it creates some affordable housing. And Easton has been incredibly proactive in planning for this and in being in negotiating position with developers to direct development where it best serves the town's interests and secures additional financial benefits such as sewer expansion to support diverse commercial development. Other mitigation funds, I believe the Avalon project helped pay for the study that allowed the town to secure the grant for the new school project. The Board of Zoning Appeals recently approved a comprehensive permit for Phase II of the Avalon project. This brings the town back into 10%. So we're back in safe harbor, and we'll submit that paperwork as soon as the comprehensive permit is finalized. Other smaller projects in addition to Avalon 2, we've got Eastondale Cottages, Acqueeset Commons, of course, Meadowview Commons. There's a planned project of mixed-income, mixed-use, commercial and residential at 661 Washington Street, the Old Coria's Plaza. There's a small subdivision called Weber Farms going in. Again, our 40B goals are going to change after the 2020 census. We don't necessarily know what our number of year-round housing units will be. We have sort of projections of what that would be. That's a big part of what the five-year housing production plan does. So we can also talk a bit, if folks are curious, about Easton's current and anticipated 40B and subsidized housing inventory numbers. I put together a little spreadsheet and handed that around, and I'm happy to talk about that.
So everyone should have, and I believe a digital version of this was forwarded as well, the aforementioned spreadsheet that kind of touches on some key data that is of interest to the board and the community. It includes both our subsidized housing inventory as it stands today. And it also touches on what Wayne just spoke through, that once the 44-unit Avalon 2 is added to our SHI, that we will be back over our 10% requirement under the law, about 10.3%. However, the SHI is tied to the decennial federal census, which is coming, as the town clerk spoke about a couple of meetings ago. And this lays out, on the left-hand side, what we can expect, the needs to be in the next 10 years as far as projects in the pipeline to keep us moving in the right direction. And I think when Avalon was coming through, a question was asked to Dottie, I believe, and I don't, I think Dottie answered it. Or I did, one of us did, the collective group speaking did. That, when that project was going through the lit process of a board, very consciously, no one of the boards, this is the last one, right? Because that's not how 40B works as a statutory matter, let alone a planning one. And that it would get us into safe harbor, but I think everyone was very conscious, and we were very clear with folks that then there's the decennial census, and we're going to have a new number to work towards. And so this sheet kind of identifies where we may be as far as what our needs are, what's in the pipeline for permitting, as far as approved projects, what the kind of risk as far as units that may come off of a subsidized housing inventory are, and where that leaves us for planning purposes.
The very short thumbnail sketches were, we currently have 8,105 year-round housing units. So our 10% is about, we now have 789, that's 9.73 with the 44 from Avalon. That'll bring us to 833, so that'll put us over the 10%. Projecting ahead, and again, it's a projection, you don't know until you get there. But the 2020 census, the projection is that our 10% number after the 2020 census will be 914, up from the current, you know, 800-some. So of course, we currently have 789. That does not include the Avalon 44. You take that away from the 914 projected. So there's also a possibility that 132 units might drop off. That's highly speculative, they may never drop off. So worst-case scenario, we'd need 257 units. However, you know, many of the affordable units may not drop off. They may remain rentals or may remain restricted affordable. Most will stay restricted or affordable in Easton. We also have anticipated growth at Acqueeset Commons. So if Acqueeset Commons builds out as anticipated, that will take care of the great majority of Easton's anticipated need. We also have several others, as I mentioned, in the pipeline, at Eastondale and Meadowview, Weber Farm. The trust is, of course, producing a number itself. There's the project at 661 Washington. So worst-case scenario, the ones that could possibly drop off do drop off. And everything in the pipeline actually gets built, our net need would be 24 units. So again, that's very speculative. But Easton, thanks to many years of proactive planning and attention, is in really quite good shape for a suburban town for its workforce housing.
Is there any type of time that you are permitted, once you get a new census result, in order to achieve the 10%? Or is it just instantly recalibrated and you fall below the 10% threshold?
Unknown.
It'll take probably about a year before we actually get the 2020 census numbers. But once those numbers are out, then the time...
Just recalibrates.
Yeah.
Recalibrates, but we should follow up with DHCD on that. But I believe traditionally, in order to qualify for safe harbor, the only way to do that is not only to be at 10%, correct? It's if you have an approved affordable housing production plan. The last one was 2017, their five-year plan. So in 2022, which is probably going to be right around the time that that decennial census result comes out, we will be, as always, on the ball and have a new housing production plan being developed to come through the board for approval. And then if you make incremental progress towards that, right? I believe if you approve half of a percent, you get one year, and a full percent, you get two.
And you do not get more than two years.
Correct. And you can't keep getting the one-year extension. You can't kind of carve it up to a half percent four times and get it, right? So there's a couple of options baked into the law. So we'll have the foundation there as far as having and keep maintaining affordable housing production plans that are current, which the town has done a great job at, Wayne, the Affordable Housing Trust Board and the Select Board. And we will need to be working on getting projects through the process. There are some here, but the single largest, of course, is Acqueeset Commons, right? That's an approved project. However, the timeline of that development agreement is subject to economic terms, which is obviously quite a broad catch-all.
But also, when you are a proactive community and you're, you know, doing all of this the right way, developers recognize that. And you're not going, they know you're sophisticated. They know that your people know what they're doing, they know how to get it done. And you're not really going to attract developers that are going to bring bad projects your way and want to fight with you. We've talked to some of them before that have said, listen, we want to talk to you, we're not going to get into a lawsuit. We know that you're selective in the kind of opportunities that you want. And that really bodes well for us and allows us a really good negotiating position to... ...to leverage other things that good housing brings, like renovating the fire station-
Yes.
...or helping to, you know, expand roadways or putting money towards the school projects. So we've, we've done a good job with that.
We've been very successful.
I just want to say one other thing is that, you know, we have a master plan that, you know, hundreds of people in the community participated in, and in the housing part of it, it talked about the need for diverse housing, for options-
Yep.
-and that carries through from the housing production plan, still gives that information. And then we have a five-year action plan that talks about how we're going to get there. Just some numbers I just pulled out of this right now that, you know, really strike me. For the 2010 through 2012, 54% of Easton residents that rent are cost burdened, which means that they're spending more than 30% of their income-
Yep.
...on their, their rent. And 54%, 34% of homeowners are cost burdened in our town, spending more than 30% of their income on their mortgage. So that's a lot, that's a lot of need, you know? And I think we have to think about that when we're looking at where our parents are going to live, when they're going to downsize, and what if somebody, you know, has a disability challenge that they need, or where are our kids going to live when, when they're looking for places?
Exactly.
So balancing the need for housing with the community need is really important, and I'm, I'm very proud of the Easton community for, for supporting these types of housing and for continuing to, to vote for, for things that help move this forward.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's a very, very key point. Easton has been very proactive in really working on this, and it's certainly borne fruit.
Well, I know that one of the last times that I was there, when they were looking at CPA funds, there was a little bit of a criticism that some of the CPA funds that the town gets goes towards housing and affordable housing. And they said that, well, the Affordable Housing Trust has a lot of money in their bank, and that was purposeful. They were doing that to save up so that they could get these projects. You can't do them with $50,000, you have to have the money to do them.
Yep.
So I hope that the CPA committee will take that into consideration this year when they're looking at, you know, funding that, because-
Yeah, thank you.
-that is part of the action plan that we had prepared.
Yep.
And you've clearly demonstrated that you can make good use of the money, good thoughtful use of that taxpayer money.
Mm-hmm.
And Chuck, I just want to thank you for all the great work that you're doing on that committee, too.
Thank you. I've been led very aptly by Mr. Byler guiding us and me through the process, and it's incredible to me, the, it's a pretty significant, significant knowledge base that's being dealt with here. I think anyone that's been listening tonight can detect that. And also, the, the Chair of our committee, Nikki Dastumian, has done a great job in, in reaching out and to networking and helping to make things happen. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. We appreciate you coming in tonight.
Thank you. Always great to hear from-
It's a pleasure.
Now we're all warmed up for the Town Administrator's presentation of the preliminary fiscal year 2021 budget.
I'll take that as a compliment of the exciting subject material.
Tom is sitting on the edge of his chair.
It's my best seat, it's the closest one.
Right.
Thank you, Dottie. On Friday, I forwarded the preliminary fiscal 2021 budget, the summary of that, and then today, the line item detailed to the board. Hopefully that was helpful. Normally, we, just because of the time crunch we're working with, I don't give a document to you folks until the night I'm presenting it. And so here we are, I'm happy to be presenting this to you this evening. Planning for a given fiscal year really kicks off in earnest the fall, the year prior, when all departments are directed to submit preliminary budget requests for my review. During the winter, the Finance Director and I meet with all of those department heads, and we review and refine their initial requests. We take a look at if, typically, particularly in our given revenue environment, things are level service requests, but if anything jumps out, what's different about the coming year? Is that necessary? We try to check those assumptions, and, you know, our departments run really tight ships here. So it's usually a pretty professional and straightforward process. We do that through the winter, we refine that and incorporate it into our most current revenue projections that we have available at that time. And typically, we bring a preliminary budget presentation to the board in February. The charter in Easton requires that it's done by March, we try to stay about a month ahead of that. Then we spend the rest of the spring, really, and that's what I have lined up here, working to refine that preliminary budget with lots of public review and input through March and April, typically balancing the budget towards the end of April so that it can be delivered to Town Meeting and adopted on the third Monday in May. So we're kind of at the top of that chart, and we're going to keep working through that over the next many months. So fiscal '21 is going to sound and feel a lot like a lot of the prior budgets, especially the ones I've given, because the fundamentals underpinning our financial condition are largely unchanged. So it will be, and at a risk of sounding repetitive, it'll be a tough year to balance a budget like it is every year. The structural revenue deficit that was born out of the last recession persists. We're going on, this will be our 13th budget consecutively, that we are meeting our charge of balancing a budget in spite of revenue that does not grow to meet our expense needs. That revenue deficit persists, it will continue to constrain our ability increasingly just to keep services level. I think Dave Field's presentation on roads is a good segue to this. That's, that's a manifestation of what we're going to talk about tonight. Certain historically positive growth revenues, such as local receipts, have slowed down a little bit, that's something that we anticipated and have been forecasting. Net state aid last year was actually cut. It's something you don't usually say, you never want to say, particularly in a growth economy, but so last year, as the board probably remembers fairly well, we had a particularly difficult year last year, much harder than many recent years, because state aid, rather than just growing slowly, was actually cut by almost a quarter million in the net. Unfortunately, the preliminary budget for the Commonwealth proposes only a minimal increase from that cut, which would still keep us below where we were in 2019. So the increases that we're looking at right now going into next year still don't even make up for what was cut this year. Unsurprisingly, department budget requests, they were instructed to only produce budgets that were level service, that any increases be tied to contractual and legal requirements. And the growth in expenses is not being driven by programmatic improvements, not being driven by fixing more roads, not being driven by doing more with the talented staff, we've had quite a few of in here tonight, it's just with fixed costs, leaving fewer and fewer dollars to do any of those more exciting things. I was mindful of this narrative while writing it, that I don't want to only focus on the challenges we have, because I could stay here all night doing that. I think it's really important to be mindful that there's been a lot of successes here to try to mitigate these challenges in some pretty meaningful ways. And so we will be going into and continuing to benefit from the third year in fiscal '21 of the current round of collective bargaining agreements that were, on the whole, very conservative. We are continuing to benefit from legacy savings achieved by the town joining for Group Insurance Commission for insurance for our employees. New growth between '18, '19, and '20, the three prior years are at record-high levels that we have not seen since before the global financial crisis. I think that's a definite bright spot, and I'll get into more detail there. On the reserve front, the proposed use of reserves in this coming budget will be the least reserved dollars that we've used, fewest, I think that's a grammatically proper term there, since 2009. And our stabilization fund is at the highest it's been in at least 20 years. So there are some real noteworthy and important positive things going on. So in summary, when you look at the big picture, the preliminary revenue projection for fiscal '21 at this time totals 89,415,000, which is an increase of just under 3% over the current year. Our projected expenses for fiscal '21 total just over 90 million, 90,500,000, which is an increase of 4.19%. It yields a preliminary budget deficit of 1.1 million. This is familiar territory for us due to the revenue, structural revenue deficit we have. However, context is important, at this time last year, we were looking at a projected deficit of about 1.9 million. So that's not to marginalize it, this will present challenges, but it is a better starting position than where we were 12 months ago. The layout of these budget presentations is, for better or for worse, always the same, revenue first and then expenditures, because our ability to spend funds and program services is predicated on our revenues, which are largely constrained by law on how we raise them. So cities and towns in Massachusetts, including Easton, are limited in their ability to increase a property tax levy, which is the total amount of tax we collect in a year, to 2.5% plus new growth in a given year. The town has and is going to continue to levy taxes to the extent that's allowed by Prop 2.5, and we've been working really, really hard to promote new growth, to shore up that tax base over the years. Beyond taxation, Easton obtains revenue from local receipts, state aid, and a combination of other funding sources. So again, total revenue, we're looking at a projected increase of just shy of 3% for next year. The preliminary budget is projecting an increase in total tax revenue of just over 4%, which is about 2.39 million, 379 million, for a total tax collection of 61,215,696. As time passes, our reliance on taxation as a proportional source of revenue increases, which adds really already a really important area for us to work on is new growth, really makes it significantly more premium that we focus on it, because that's one of the only areas that we really have much influence in, in that regard. So the, the table you see up there shows, if you move from left to right, starting in '18, '19, '20 to '21, you can see quite clearly both in the raw numbers, but the bottom line is really the most informative, that in 2018, taxes composed 70.5% of our revenue, and next year, we're looking at 73.5. And that's going to continue. So because taxes are the largest portion of our revenue, which has always been the case, and that necessarily makes them the most meaningful, the revenue source that we are most reliant on, and so that makes new growth critical. So Prop 2.5 is 2.5% plus new growth. So new growth, simply put, is the value of any new or significantly improved property subject to taxation. Expansion of infrastructure, adoption of improved zoning, implementing streamlined permitting processes and software, all of those things promote new growth. And I thought this year, we should start including in these budgets conversations of some real concrete examples of this. And so on the screen, you have a handful of calendar years are noted, but this came up in the housing conversation as well, because all these things with good planning intermingle. You know, housing planning is in a silo separate from economic development planning, separate from financial planning, these things all work together, and we've tried to be quite successful with it. Queesit Commercial District, obviously, we have the 40R there, we have the zoning overlay that was adopted in 2015 to help people do more with their existing property. We purchased the necessary sewer treatment capacity from Doug King, did a MassWorks-funded roadway improvement project as part of that 40R. The Economic Development Council rolled out a site locator tool for folks who may be looking to develop in Easton to use Easton's existing GIS database and tools to find property that is for sale and have easy access to zoning maps and other really important stuff that folks need to have access to, to make good decisions about development. It was actually featured by the Mass Municipal Association as a best practice for promoting development on a statewide level. Obviously, invested millions of dollars in the Route 138 area to construct the Queesit Sewer, which just wrapped up last summer. And you're seeing some of that start to come to fruition already with the Planning Board's approval of the mixed-use redevelopment of Coria's Plaza that folks were at the groundbreaking for last fall. Five Corners has a lot of similarities. The Board executed a lip with Avalon that resulted in significant new growth worth more than 625,000, brought in more than 6 million in mitigation for not only the five-corner sewer, but also, to Wayne's point, funded the feasibility portion of the now-approved Easton Early Elementary School project. Those are critical, critical projects for the town. Town Meeting adopted the Compact Neighborhood Overlay District in that neck of the woods that will take advantage of sewer, that'll be DIF-eligible growth. That project will be going to a joint hearing of a planning committee, sorry, Planning and Zoning Board and the Conservation Commission, February 18th, to get through the permitting process and hopefully start construction this year. Community came together and adopted the DIF to help support the financing of the five-corner sewer, which is the largest capital project, non-building project we've ever done. There was an amendment to that lip with Avalon last summer for additional new growth, additional units of housing to get us back into safe harbor, and additional mitigation to help support that sewer construction. Received a $1.5 million grant for the sewer construction there from MassWorks, and obviously, the construction is ongoing. So we're working, I think, quite hard across all of our departments, across our boards, to try to shore this area up. And I think that the dividends of that effort are beginning to show. Obviously, the town can't take credit for, for all of it. There's been a significant economic recovery coming out of that recession as well, particularly recently. So between the regional and national economy doing well, between those major investments on the town part, new growth hit record levels in Easton in 2018, '19, and '20. We haven't seen levels like that since before the global financial crisis in 2008. So over $1 million in '18, about 865,000 in '19, and we certified at about 950,000 in '20. So you're looking at a three-year average of about 933,000 in new growth. If you took the prior 10 years before this current window, you're looking at 654, so that's a 43% increase in our new growth since where we were coming from. Again, I am certainly absolutely not taking personal credit for that there, and I'm not even attributing it solely to the town's efforts, but that is a part of a bigger picture that's very important, that really speaks truth to how important it is, that we do work on all these kind of comprehensive plans, that we do things like Envision Easton, and that we try to work with people to get good projects moving, because this is, new growth is the only place where the town can increase the tax levy outside of an override.
Right now, but, you know, one of the things, too, that I think is worth thinking about, that's not going to happen anytime very soon, but as we're looking to increase economic development, when a town reaches about 20% or a little bit more of their commercial, they can look at changing a split tax rate. And then if, you know, if you get to that point, that can certainly help, too. It has, you know, a lot of thought has to be put into it, but that's also a strategic way to look at new opportunities for revenue.
Sure. For budgeting purposes, as is typical, at this point in the year, we're projecting a more conservative figure right now, 700,000 for fiscal '21. Again, one of, for one reason, it's just based on where we are in the budgeting process. We'll take a closer look at building permit activity to adjust that if need be. And it's also based on the current timeline for permitting. So in order for growth to hit in a certain year, it, it needs to be completed and assessed. So just based on where things are in the pipeline, we're taking a little bit more of a conservative look for now. We'll take a look at that as spring rolls forward. So taxation's our largest source of revenue. The second-largest source of revenue for the town is state aid. It is also the town's most significant and persistent revenue challenge. State aid was cut into fiscal year 2008, and it did not recover until 2016. '17, '18, and '19 saw reliable, if modest, increases to state aid in Easton, which you can see more towards that right-hand portion of the graph on the screen. Unfortunately, in the current fiscal year we're in, fiscal '20, the net state aid to Easton, which is state aid minus the assessments that we pay for things like charter schools, was cut by 232,000, which was almost a 2% cut. The preliminary Town of Easton budget for fiscal '21 is built off of the assumptions from the governor's fiscal '21 budget for the Commonwealth, and that has a 1.26% increase to state revenue. So unfortunately, from where we sit now, net state aid for fiscal '21- So unfortunately, from where we sit now, net state aid for fiscal '21 is still not even going to be where we were at in 2019. Framed more simply, we've lost ground. And you could see that on the graph, the very obvious dip, and the dotted red line is what we're projecting based on the governor's proposal. So even assuming we were in an environment where costs did not escalate, which isn't really a thing anywhere, but even assuming that were the case, we still would be behind. So not only are we behind in real, real dollars from 2019 based on this, that doesn't take into account the cost of labor, of supplies and goods, of inflation, anything like that. So we're, this really, really takes a situation that's already challenging and kind of ups the ante for us budget officials. So state aid used to compose about 23% of our total revenue before the global financial crisis, and we're looking at less than 16% next year. So it's basically the exact opposite effect, and that's, those things are obviously related from the taxation table that I showed where taxes necessarily are composing a ever-growing part of our revenue. That is in part because state aid is stagnating and composing less and less and less. The recently adopted Student Opportunity Act got quite a bit of press coverage, for good reason. It does make a lot of meaningful improvements to education in Massachusetts, so this is not a slight at that whatsoever. But Easton is a minimum aid community. Without getting into a level of detail that I'm not qualified to even attempt to explain anyway, what that really means for us is that we get a minimum increase in Chapter 70 education aid every year. That is basically $30 per student. So in Easton's case, we're looking at about a $100,000 increase to a line item worth more than $10 million. And that is not going to change. So the reform has come. It is here, and our situation remains unchanged. So we can expect this to continue. As state aid continues to shrink as a portion of our annual revenue, those losses obviously have to be offset somewhere, but we don't deficit spend on the local level. So those can only be offset through taxation, which we're doing everything we can to promote that through new growth, the use of reserves, which we are trying to stop doing at the level that we have done in the past, or through expense reductions and service cuts.
I think it's worth noting, we've talked about this before, but just to get on record in this presentation, that we did go in and meet with--
Senator Lewis.
Right, the, if you want to just give--
Sure, yeah, the chair of the Education Reform Committee. It's a very good point, Dottie. It's in my written memo, but I didn't include it here. We have and we enjoy the benefits of a good relationship with our delegation, and part of that is that we routinely, members of this board, myself, the school committee superintendent, routinely lobby and meet with lawmakers to try to explain the circumstances of Easton, advocate for additional funding. We obviously understand they have their own budgets to balance. And that included last fall, a meeting with Senator Lewis and Senator Timmeltie to discuss with the Education Reform Committee the needs that the town has. And I believe in the Senate and also in the House that our reps did well by us and did try to fight for Easton. They tried to amend, they've tried to file amendments to the act to move Easton into a different labor market for what's called a growth adjustment factor, I believe, or a wage adjustment factor, which is one of the many variables in how they calculate how much aid you should receive. So both Senator Timmeltie, as well as Representative Cronin, attempted to get that attached to the bill, but both of those amendments were defeated. So we remain in the labor market we are in. So this is--
And they, they said that they are going to try to do that again this year. You know, they understand they're, they meet with us often, so when we talk about state aid, net state aid decreasing, it's certainly not for lack of efforts on our legislative delegation and--
Correct.
You know, we do appreciate and enjoy that relationship where we can talk with them about things, well, what are some other ways that we can, you know, try to make changes? And trying to get this amendment in is one of those ways.
Those are very important points. Thank you. My intent here is more, was not to malign, certainly, individual lawmakers' efforts. So we are, we are doing everything we can to keep working with them on that. Local receipts, third largest revenue category. As the board may recall, in the past few years, Wendy and I have made it a point to highlight local receipts. Both has a bright spot in our revenue picture, but also to make clear that the level of growth we're seeing over 5%, 6%, 7% in some years was not something that we thought was going to sustain each and every single year. And we did see some actual decline between '17 and '18 based on building permits that do not reoccur. You don't have Avalon-scale projects every year. We are always conservative this early in the revenue forecasting game, and we do that to take care, to be conservative in that approach because conservative revenue estimates are important for expectation setting and for making sure that we don't over-obligate our expenditure capacity. It's also important for continuing to generate free cash, which is required not only for our structural revenue shortfall in the operating budget, but we also use that for capital investments. So right now, we're going with a modest cross-the-board estimate of 1.5% for those local receipts. Kind of skipped over explaining, local receipts are vehicle excise tax, ambulance fees, local meals taxes, things like that. So when folks move into town and are paying a property tax bill, that's wonderful, but they also usually bring cars, so that's nice as well. That pays excise tax to the community. They patronize restaurants in Easton, which gets a local meals tax. So those dollars are all very, very important to delivering service. So again, right now, we're looking at a modest increase of 1.5% there, and we'll keep an eye on that as actuals come through, as the season moves on. Let's get to the last major revenue category, which is reserves and other financing sources. I'm going to really focus on reserves because that's the most significant part of it. So we, since the onset of the global financial crisis, the cuts to state aid and the stagnation of growth there, the town has been relying on reserve funds, which is a mix of free cash and stabilization funds, to close that revenue deficit at a rate that became unsustainable. Four years ago, the select board adopted a series of financial management guidelines intended to limit that practice, understanding that that's not, that's far easier said than done, hence kind of guidelines rather than for rigidity of policy. And the main important features there was that no more than half of our free cash would be used in the operating budget in the following year, that a minimum of a quarter of that would be transferred to the stabilization fund, and that we try to limit the use of stabilization dollars for rare or extenuating circumstances, unforeseen expenditures, legal settlements, things of that nature. So this slide captures what that structural revenue deficit looks like. I hope this is a little more legible. The one I was using before was kind of mountainous, and somebody after me, using it for three years, kind of matter-of-factly said, oh yeah, no one understands that graph. So I hope this is a little bit better. In red, you see free cash, so it's basically excess funds that were either unspent or collected over what we anticipated, and blue is general stabilization fund use. And all the way on the left is fiscal '27. That was right when the last general override was passed in Easton. That's some, it's a rarity in this community. And it is unsurprising that in a year when local revenue growth was large, that the and state revenue was still growing, that the reliance on reserve money was effectively nonexistent. The immediate year right after, still largely nonexistent. But in fiscal '09, following the financial meltdown, the state began cutting revenue to cities and towns, and you see the beginning of a trend that started in 2009 and has never ended of using one to two, up to and over $2 million in a given year of reserve funds just to balance the budget. This is not reflective of wild spending and massive staff-ups and huge capital plans. This is really basically reflective of additional reserve support needed to keep services mostly level, which is unfortunate. However, the, the good news is that since the adoption of those policies, if you look 2016, was a peak year for reserve use. The board adopted those policies, and we've cut reserve use in half in a very short amount of time. And that is not without pain. Obviously, in a kind of purely financial worldview, it's great, but that, that means that if we're using 1 million, which is roughly what we're using this year, compared to four years ago, using two, that's $1 million of revenue that's off the table.
What could we do with $1 million?
For perspective, the entire budget for every town hall department is about 2.4. Or if we recall, Dave Field just gave a presentation where we have about a half million a year to work with on our roads, and if we want to start doing what we know DPW could do and giving them the resources to not only keep the roads where they are, but really start chipping away at that backlog, you need to add $1 million to it. So we've cut the equivalent of that out of our operating budget deliberately and not without pain in a really compressed window of time. And that is because those policies were adopted, and in '19, '20, and '21, we are proposing adhering strictly to them. And if that is the case, 2021 fiscal year is projecting 909,000 in free cash. That's half of what's available from last year. It's going to be the lowest use of reserves in the first time since 2009 that we've used less than $1 million of reserve funds in the operating budget.
That's, that's incredible progress in a really short amount of time.
It is. And again, not without challenges. It is, in one sense, indisputably the right thing to do because, and we had a lot of good conversations about this in the spring when folks were looking at the fact that we still had a gap to close leading into April, and people were understandably disappointed to see that there were so many challenges, especially for larger budgets, especially for the school, and folks asked legitimate questions of stabilization funds doing well. Why don't we just take a half million out of there? And the answer is that you're propping up a spending level that has no plan next year. And what if you have another cut that you weren't anticipating? All you're doing is putting, you're kind of putting it higher so that when there is a market correction or a significant recession and revenue stagnates or drops, it, it will just make it significantly worse. So we're trying to do the right thing today, even though it's somewhat painful, so that we're not in a weakened position tomorrow and for the eventual recession. You know, economies--
Our spending has to be sustainable.
Correct.
If we want to hire somebody, we need to know that there's a way to support that person.
Correct, within the budgets that we have. And so we frequently have positions, we try to maintain the service level we have. There are significant unfunded needs, and we'll get into that a little bit later, that we just simply don't fund, and which we will now be adding to that list, roadwork. So at the same time as trying to cut our use of these reserves in the budget, we've also been trying to build our stabilization funds. So free cash is kind of like excess money left over in your checking account. Stabilization fund is your savings. And so since 2016, as I said, we cut the use of reserves and the, of general reserve dollars in the budget in half, and we've doubled the size of our stabilization fund. It was at 1.56 million. It's now over 3.3 and 1/4, and that's the highest it's been in at least 20 years. We stopped looking farther back.
From a dollar perspective.
From a dollar perspective.
Not necessarily from a percentage of your budget.
That's a good point. From a percentage of our budget, we are at least in the best position since 2009, which is that we're near about 6% of a funded ratio. So what we're talking about here is that our collective free cash and stabilization funds right now are roughly equivalent to 6% of our annual operating expenditure level. We set as a policy, our fund balance policy, between 7 and 10% as the goal of where you want to be, and that anything under 7% is cause for concern. So we've made very significant progress in real dollars, but also as a percent, but we're still not fully there.
And there's no, no surprise that there's a correlation between your last slide, which showed us utilizing less free cash and no stabilization funds, and going down, and the upward trend of our ability to increase our stabilization dollars. Right?
Yeah, that makes sense. Are you spending less and you're putting more in the bank?
Yep, exactly. So, and I think that speaks to what you said earlier about the fact that we are trying to build up this fund, this stabilization fund. If you notice, like to your point, back in '09 and '08, when we had a height of 3 million, how far it dropped.
And how quickly.
And how quickly.
And that was with layoffs.
Right.
So yes, and that's really, and it followed an override.
Yep.
So think about all of the cards on, on the table that were in the town's favor from a revenue and financial position standpoint before the last recession, and even with all of those things, granted, it was the worst recession in a generation, and hopefully none of us will be in a situation where we have that on our watch, but we need to be prepared. And even with all of those things in the town's favor, we spent our stabilization account down to, I think, about $700,000 in the course of two years with layoffs.
Just scary.
Yeah. So it really, and I'm not attempting to fear monger, that actually almost perfectly mirrors the state revenue graph, and that's not an accident either. This is a new slide. We felt it was good to also include, for discussion purposes, that the revenue deficit challenges us in a lot of different ways. It's not just on our revenue coming in, especially when you couple it with trying to be more prudent about what you're doing on a reserve front, and you're using half of that free cash in the operating budget, and then a quarter is going into the bank, that leaves you with a quarter of your free cash for capital, which is not sufficient.
It's just not enough.
It's not enough. And at the same time, you have a dynamic where we are forced to not only increasingly sharpen our pencils from kind of a programmatic standpoint, where we get smarter and smarter about reorganizing departments and finding economic efficiencies and regionalizing services and all these exciting and good things to be doing to save spending, we also need to continue to sharpen our pencil on our revenue and expense estimates, and things get closer and closer. You have a diminishing margin to work in. Anyone who works in budgeting would tell you that. So we have a, we have a shrinking margin for error every year, and that manifests predictably with free cash certifications beginning to decline. And so last year, free cash was certified at 1.8 million, which is a decrease of about a quarter million from the year prior. Again, not unexpected. Tom, to your point, you look at '16, '17, '18, and '19 on all of these graphs, and they share something similar. Some of it is good, some of it is a challenge, but this forces us to be increasingly conservative when we already frankly are on our, on our aspirations for operating and for capital investment levels, which are by any standard challenged. I did not, this year, have the community comparison report, the financial condition report, leading up to this because we're working with Budget Subcommittee, and we're going to try to synthesize all that into a more kind of straightforward and helpful and probably less dreadfully boring for everyone else's sake but mine format, but none of those fundamentals have changed. And we've done these reports over and over. Outside bodies have done these reports. Our spending, when you try to look at it in a remotely scientific manner of like per-capita standards, per-pupil standards, road mile standards, is, our spending is low. It is low in a total operating budget perspective. It is low in a per-capita perspective, and we, we just simply have revenue challenges.
I think that's a great point, Connor. And while I won't list all of the examples, I think you, you alluded to it. If we reflect back on a lot of these slides, all of them to me seem to be on the margins, getting tighter or more challenged or giving less benefit, whether it's free cash certifications slightly going down successive years, whether it's the road miles slightly getting challenged over time, whether it's the expense structure slightly being more challenged, or I just, there's a theme that if you look at a lot of these slides, you start to see the trends becoming more challenging across the board. And I know it's nothing quote-unquote new, but when you continue to see another year added, like in this where the amount of free cash certification goes down, what does the next year look like after that? What is, you know, if the trend continues?
Less, probably.
Right?
Right.
And I think that's just reflective of us, again, being challenged on the expense side, so we're trying to sharpen pencils as best as possible, and each year to be as accurate as possible, and that leaves a little less free cash available as we try to nibble around the margins.
So expenses at this point are preliminarily-- Right. So expenses, at this point, are preliminary. The town has been successful. We've been, I think, trying to do a full court press for a long time now, pushing on new growth and local receipts on the revenue side, as well as through advocacy on the state revenue portion. But we also don't just take for a given that we don't have control over expenses. We do, to certain extents, and in the places that we do, we've been achieving efficiencies there, some of which we're going to talk about on the next item with energy. But we've been very successful in realizing actual cost reductions. So there's a difference between being more efficient and less growth and actually just cutting spending. We've been able to do both in health insurance. We've been very aggressive and successful with energy. We have been maxed out on our net metering cap for years here, where we take advantage of solar credits to offset our energy expenses, which reduces the cost of running the town. We have reorganized departments. Health and Community Services is always kind of a poster child for this, where they've effectively had a net zero cost increase since, I think, 2015. And we just got done earlier talking about the extraordinary additional things that they're doing with less. And again, I would challenge folks to find something in the private sector or somewhere else that in five years with inflation where it's been, has cost nothing of increased value and is improving programming. It's incredibly rare, and it's a testament to the work of a lot of our departments. We're going to be looking at regionalization. Fiscal 21 is going to see the regionalization of dispatch and the dissolution of an entire municipal department. That's quite a dramatic step, and that's where we're moving. We have adopted wage scales and compensation plans that are more responsible as far as the programmed and built-in salary increases that are more sustainable. And we've also had our employees work with us on the other side of the Labor Management Table in this three-year window to agree to contracts that are significantly more conservative than in prior years, with seven out of eight of them are ratified right now, and I think five out of seven of them took a zero base wage increase in whole or part for fiscal 19. And that saves compounding interest forever. So they've been working with us there, too. Despite those successes, with challenges persist, and our total expenses continue to just rise at a rate that outpaces revenue growth. And that's not a really hard bar to meet, because our revenue growth is outside of taxation and new growth, quite limited and constrained. So where we stand right now is Fiscal 21 funds no service improvements for anything in town. The school 4% is just a placeholder. While they work through their preliminary requests, I'm sure that you'll be in a level service or regressive situation for the schools, but they are going to work through that and give us a lot more detail as we move into March for the budget hearings. Many needs, particularly for larger departments, DPW, we heard about, the capital front, fire, police, have and are going to continue to remain unfunded, not because they lack warrant, but simply the revenue is not there. And those departments, as is our tradition at this point, are going to get into significantly more detail at the joint budget hearings with the Select Board and Finance Committee, which we're scheduling for the Select Board's regular March 23 meeting on the Wednesday, immediately thereafter that. So right now, we're looking at town department increases, which are largely contractual, of 3.8%. That's a $662,000 increase to put the total town operation budgets at about $18,096,000 for Fiscal 21. School budget increase, again, that's a placeholder, a 4% figure of just under 1.7 million, to bring the school operation budget to $44,580,000. They're in their process of aligning their preliminary budget, and they'll keep us closely involved as we always work together there. So the funds available that we have for appropriation are limited mostly by fixed cost increases. Fixed costs are costs which are difficult or impossible to significantly constrain in a given year. They contain things such as debt service payments, employee insurance premiums, property casualty and liability insurance premiums, and regional assessments for things like regional school and for charter school assessments. So there's a selection of those costs on those slide. Above, they're preliminary. They will be revised. So debt service on the whole is an increase of $110,000. That's actually, reflects a decrease in non-exempt debt in the amount of $118,000, but that gets offset by an increase in exempt debt of $230,000, which is primarily due to the beginning of onboarding the short-term interest costs from the borrowing for the early elementary school project. Obviously, revenue will increase outside the levy for that $230,000 amount of exempt debt, and the non-exempt debt is decreasing. But in the net, you get about a 2.5% increase for debt service. I'm going to talk more about employee insurance on the next slide, so I'm going to skip that for now. Workers' comp, property casualty and liability, we're currently carrying a 2.6% increase based on, I believe, our actuals, which is quite advantageous. We've seen that go up significantly more in previous years. So that is a more modest increase. Right now, we're carrying a $100,000 assume snow and ice deficit in the budget. Our spending is tracking low currently. I've probably just jinxed ourselves, and you can all yell at me in March if I did. But obviously, there's plenty of winter left, and we'll keep our eyes on that. That would be great if we meet the budget and can pull that $100,000 out of the deficit that we're projecting.
How much was that? Out of the deficit, $100,000?
Yes. Right now, we're assuming a $100,000 deficit there, so that's about 8% or 9% of our total projected deficit. So obviously, we would welcome the ability to pull that out of there. Retirement and pension assessment, so that's a huge portion of our budget. If you think about our budget, it's just shy of 90 million. I mean, you're looking at more than 5% of our annual spend is being paid to Bristol County Retirement. And that's because, like us, they have ambitious goals of fully funding certain liabilities, and they're working towards fully funding their liabilities, I think, by 2028. And between now and then, their assessments, which basically add on top of employee paycheck contributions that go there, are going to get more and more aggressive until they reach fully funding. In theory, will then drop off precipitously. I don't know how many of us will be at the table in 2028.
I was going to say, we're going to be around in 2028.
Hopefully, mate.
I'm shooting for it.
But that should give us a real meaningful opportunity there with millions of expenses coming off of books. But that's quite, it's quite a ways away. So 6.39% increase for now, that's actually less than what we've seen in prior years. We've been closer to 8% or 9% increases. And with everywhere, again, that we do have some control, we try to exert it. That's reflective of an early pay discount. We pay upfront to get, I think, $90,000 saved, which out of 290,000 assessments, a decent chunk. So we try to be responsible there and keep that limited to the extent we can. Regional and county school assessment number is carrying a projected increase for the southeastern regional school of 7%. They are still, that's a placeholder for now. They're working through their process. This year, we're also moving to Bristol Culture, Bristol County Agricultural High School. I'm really off my acronym game tonight. Bristol Aggie is being moved out of the other general government spending account, which is in the town's general budget. And we're going to move that into the regional school budget, because that, frankly, is a more appropriate place for it, and because we're going to start seeing some increases in that budget over time, because that county school recently approved an MSBA project themselves. And that is paid through assessments to the member communities per pupil. Our enrollment there is quite low. I think it is five.
Five currently, it will be seven in 2021.
So they're currently projecting between a $5,000 and $7,000 per pupil cost. So you're looking at a low end of 35, high end of $49,000 cost there. So we wanted to get that in the appropriate place in the budget before that happened, so we could pay attention to that as it rolls along. So fixed topics, fixed costs are a dry topic amongst a already dry subject of budgeting. However, I thought there was some qualified good news here that's noteworthy and worth sharing. So health insurance is one of municipalities' largest fixed costs. The town, obviously, with our revenue constraints, is always looking for ways to save expenses and control long-term growth, to reduce the pressure that's put on our already lean operating budgets. And so five years ago, we switched to GIC. We saved $335,000 that year. We've also rolled out through my office, insurance incentive plans, things that are not mandatory, but just incent employees. The GIC, I think, offers, I don't know, somewhere between a dozen and 17 health plans. It's honestly, it's kind of overwhelming. Folks sometimes go with the brand they know, maybe they pick Tufts. One, maybe Unicare would do it for them, based on their actual network needs. And so we've rolled out incentive programs that we've been doing, I think, every year for three or four years now, that encourage people, hey, no pressure, but take a look. And if you switch from a costly plan to a more affordable plan, not only do the employees obviously save their proportional share of premiums, we save a proportional share of premium, and we cut a check to the employees out of those savings as a bonus, and we still net savings. And I think, either last year or the year before, we netted $100,000 savings through those incentive plans, which is meaningful and cost us nothing to roll out. So the result there is that our, if you look at the annual increase since when we switched, we're looking at about a 1.5% budget increase to health insurance on average every year. And that is, for anyone who has their own insurance through work, that's quite good. That significantly outperforms the market. The Kaiser Family Foundation does an annual survey of employer-provided insurance benefits across the entire United States. I think I linked to it in my memo. It's actually a pretty cool widget for folks who like kind of geeking out on this data. But I ran an export of government employers with 200-plus employees, which is very comparable to the town of Easton, and what their average family insurance premium increases were in the past five years. And they average about 5.84% annually, and we're at 1.5. So we're significantly outperforming the market there. And if our insurance was rising at 5.8% every year, we'd be having way harder conversations, frankly, than anything we've had to talk about now, because this is a budget that's 8 million. So the difference between 1.5 and 5.8 is massive. So that's been a really important success. Again, I told myself, I'm not just going to focus on the challenges we have. So I think that's certainly worth noting.
Well, I think this says a lot about our employees, too, and our partnership with our employees, because this gives them the tools to make sure they're rightsizing their healthcare in a way that helps them. And when they do make those changes, for the town and the employee to be sharing in that benefit-
Right.
-is really very creative, a great way to get people to pay attention to. I mean, back in the day, when I first got married, my husband and I both had health insurance, and it was no big deal if you were overinsured, because you weren't paying for it, your employers were. So, you know, when you have to start paying for it like I do, I look at that stuff a lot more closely now.
That's a good point. And so that's been definitely beneficial. So for now, the GIC is going through their process of rate setting. They gave a preliminary budget forecast of 4% to 7%, which is obviously on the higher end. I believe that's higher than, they typically benchmark their own expectations. They don't like to be significantly above, I think, 3.5%. So we plugged in a 5% increase for now, again, to be conservative, and we will keep an eye on that. Rate should be set, I believe, within the next month. So by the time a new budget revision comes out towards late March, we should know a lot more information on that front, and that'll have a meaningful impact, either to the positive or the negative on the deficit. So again, summary, you are looking at a level service, pretty bare bones operating budget, just under 3%, just under a 3% increase in revenue, with a current preliminary expenditure forecast at 4.19%. We have a preliminary deficit of 1.1 million to work through. It's not insignificant, but we are frequently in this position. We've overcome larger deficits before. We will this time. I've already touched on all this. Basically, we're going to keep an eye on all these important areas as they develop, and we're going to continually refine this budget. So in late March, we'll have the departmental budget presentations. We're currently targeting having the Budget Subcommittee do their kind of state-of-the-town presentation that first night, building on what they started last year. I should be delivering a refined budget change memo at that time. And we're just going to keep working at it, as we always do, in trying to put pressure everywhere we can to get it done. So happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
Go ahead.
Connor, I would just say, very well done, as always, to the team as well, Wendy. Appreciate all the effort and everybody else that helps. The write-up was informative. I don't think there was anything that was said here that was surprising. Candidly, it is a continuation of the challenges that we faced for several years now. And I just think it's important that, and I appreciate that you began to communicate now, that we use every meeting that we have between now and when we have to finalize, to communicate with our community, because I do believe that it will be yet another challenge discussion of trying to pick a lot of worthy spending locations and a lot of worthy expenses we would like to do, that we unfortunately will probably be challenged to do so. You know, I certainly would like to see the use of the free cash, instead of it being against operating, to be more of a capital nature, which is an ideal way to leverage when you have found money, to take care of those structural things, that if you don't lead to, can lead to exacerbated operating costs, right? If you don't do the capital project, it might lead to increased R&amp;M, for example, and then that puts further strain down the lane. I think it was perfect timing to have this conversation on the heels of what Dave Fields presented, because I think Dave Fields was representative, to your point, of a lot of capital situations the town finds itself in. I know for myself, I made a mental note to try to get a firmer grasp of the rest of those. While I have an understanding, I'd like to, again, as always every year, refresh my thoughts about the other capital needs that are out there.
Sure.
It's just, it's a challenge. I think that we, as you laid out, we delicately balance the importance of savings, because we saw what can happen if we have a downturn in circumstances in just two short years. And again, may it never be that depth, but that's not what we're planning for. And yet, not trying to use free cash for that, and so that we can save, but having these very worthy expense needs, it is almost at times feeling like there is a, there is a no-full-win situation. It is trying to pick lesser of evils at times. I definitely support being smart from that, allocating monies to the stabilization fund to get that to the certain point of the 7% to 10%, as hard as it is to do that, is certainly prudent and appropriate, and it helps us preserve the long-term integrity of our financial base. And I think that's so important. It is hard, hard to keep that front and center when we have conversations like we did last year, but it is important to do so, because without that financial backing, or backstop, so to speak, the situation could have been much more damaging, I think, as illustrated in the last recession, to weather challenges that we face. So look forward for the Budget Subcommittee engaging meaningfully on this. This is definitely going to go a long way to helping us further those conversations. We look forward to presenting before the joint teams of the Finance Committee and the Select Board. Appreciate your time to do that as well. And there's a lot of work to do, that's for sure, right, at this part of the process. So thank you again to the team for doing what you've done.
Thank you.
Great. Craig, any comments?
I let Tom-
What Tom said?
I let him handle all the financial parts.
I agree with Craig and Tom, but the, a couple of quick questions. Which is the 10% plateau that you were referring to, Tom? Is that free cash or stabilization?
So, right, it's the stabilization fund, I believe?
Both.
Both added together?
It's a cumulative balance. So, yes, so we want our reserves, ideally, to be equivalent to 10% of a prior year's spending cost.
Okay.
So reserves in, for our terms, is both your free cash on hand and your stabilization.
And the second question is, is this on the website already?
It will be tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you.
And will Dave Field's presentation be available as well?
Yes, Dave Field, we have all of our payment management presentations incorporated into his report page.
Excellent.
And Dave and all the other department heads, it's hard to see on the screen. It's already crossed out. Preliminary capital requests have already begun. So that's an important process. There's a committee for that. Ultimately, they come together with myself and Wendy. We're tentatively, I think, scheduling on March 10th to finalize the prioritization. The capital planning process in Easton, much like the operating budget process, is thorough. It has good bones that it's based off of in our charter and our bylaws, where we, when you talk about making, you're certainly not making choices about optimization, you're making choices about kind of the least bad things to not fund. And the capital bylaw is actually very explicit there, and it's pretty much common sense. But- But we end up prioritizing life-saving equipment, right? Which makes sense. You hate to not fund a technology need. For example, the town has a new version of permitting software we would love to get to, but we need to buy an ambulance, right? And so I don't feel that it's appropriate for me to prioritize or recommend to the capital committee to prioritize software. That's certainly great, helps with new growth when we are going to be challenged on ambulance, right? So that, that is where we are.
It's a tough conversation. It's exactly like, again, not equating life-saving to the roads, but yeah, we're taking care of the important feeder roads. We're taking care of the main roads.
That's right.
That most people drive. It would cost us exponentially more.
And be riskier to public safety.
Right? But we have to at some point, I think, as a, as a team and as a community, begin to assess what the opportunity cost is of not getting to those other things. It's not that we're making bad decisions on the ambulance, but literally that opportunity cost of not implementing upgrades or keeping our town as relevant as possible to best position ourselves to be successful and support the community. Just long-term, I can't help but think those small things add up in aggregate.
Well, we, I would say another way to say that is measuring our risk, right?
Yeah.
One other specific question to at least address for a moment, Connor, would be the new growth for 21 over 20 is a negative 25%.
Right.
Now, but that's a moving target, isn't it? Because you're getting less new growth to pay, to help pay for the expenses that we have, but the new growth itself creates further expenses. Is that?
It's, it's a really complex circumstance. The short answer is not necessarily. Not all growth is the same, right? New growth, so, so a couple of things. One is the, the cut we're projecting there is, is a conservative estimate, which I think is actually the estimate we have gone with every year, including these years.
At least.
Right. So we start the budget at the $700,000 assumption every year. It's a safe and conservative number, and that way, if we come in at, say, 1 million or 865,000 or 950,000, that is a, that's a good situation. We then have some additional revenue. We used some of that this fall to offset these additional cuts to state revenue that you might recall came after the budget was balanced. So it's a good thing that new growth came in, a quarter million above what we had budgeted because even after we balanced the budget, then we got hit with another revision to state aid that, that dropped our state revenue more. So we, that gives us an ability to kind of tap into things and correct those things at town meeting, which we did in the fall. As far as it does the new growth equate to a dollar-for-dollar offset, my professional opinion is no. It's, you can't make it that simple. The things that drive costs are fixed costs. They are labor contracts, there are broader economic costs, and of course, there's a service demand, depending on what type of, of project contributes to growth. But you can't even say what type of project because if you talk about housing, well, it depends on who moves into the house, right? Who knows? I mean, you could have a relatively low impact from a financial perspective, family move in, or you could have a high-impact one. You could have a type of housing that has no children in the schools but has higher ambulance needs. You could have a restaurant that has major issues of abortive health perhaps. So it's, it's, there's no kind of rubric for if X project, then Y cost. So for really large ones, we usually do a detailed financial impact analysis like we did for Avalon to kind of get at those things more specifically. But no, I think particularly when you're coming from a basis where you are already behind, right? So even if, let's assume that no increased demand for service ever happened ever again, we're still behind on funding levels. We don't have enough to meet the existing need, so not growing is not an option in my professional calculation.
Well, the other thing is sometimes those, those drive other opportunity costs. For instance, being, selecting housing in a certain area drives economic development opportunity costs.
That's right.
So it's, it's just the way that they're planned and rolled out together make a big difference.
And it certainly has been a blessing at times.
I've never seen a dollar of new growth I didn't like. Just going to put that out there.
Put that on a T-shirt.
That's, that's fine. I think, I think fundamentally, if you cut out, you know, because we now know, you could take the prior 10 years and say you could plug three, you know, about 300,000 less a year in for the past three years and ask yourself beyond all the ethical implications, beyond the diversification of housing implications, our budget wouldn't have just come into balance had none of those things happened, right? If we traded the growth and the theoretical offset in service demand, we'd still have a structural revenue deficit because it is a, in my opinion, in my relatively informed opinion, it has been and will continue to be a fundamental revenue problem that you look, if you lay those graphs on top of each other, they basically are mirror images and that's, you know, that's what we're looking at. There, of course, are increased demands for services. Chief Partridge speaks very well to that frequently about ambulances. That also brings more ambulance revenue. You know, the types of services people need change, the acuity of those needs might change, but the way that our finances are structured have not fundamentally changed since Prop 2.5 was enacted minus our second-largest revenue source continuing to be more and more inadequate. And in my opinion, that's what's driving the challenge here.
Thank you.
So this is a good segue into how you're going to save the town even more money by looking at purchasing of electric.
Wendy, you want to give a brief summary on that?
No. So actually, you have a memo in there, but I realized that there was an issue with a decimal point.
That makes more sense.
Thank you.
Okay. So one of the things that we do when we can is we try to be smart about buying energy for our accounts. We try to generate net metering credits to offset the cost of energy, and we also keep an eye on the energy market. Wendy has some good news and a request for the board, so I will not steal that thunder.
Thank you. So we recently, we recently informed that the pricing for electricity is really very advantageous for us right now. Our current electric contract does not expire until December of 2020, but right now, because of the way prices are, it's a good time for us to lock in prices for a subsequent contract. So last week, right now, our current pricing for electricity supply is nine, 9.1 cents a kilowatt hour. Last week, we were informed that pricing was at 8.843 cents a kilowatt hour, and that it was at the point where natural gas prices, which drive a lot of the electricity costs, are at an all-time low. Right now, it's, it's, the prices are less than $2 a decotherm, but historically, when prices get to that point, they usually see like a rebounding effect and they're going to come back up. So they feel like right now, we're very close to the bottom of that pricing, and so now would be a good time to lock in for another contract. So they've been sending us daily updates, and last, so last week, it was 8.843. The next day, it was 8.779. Actually, today, it was 8.732. So it's in a very good, good price range. It will actually save us money, and at, at the pricing that we got today, we would be looking at saving, you know, probably around $20,000 annually over the pricing that we have now. So, and these prices are based on a three-year contract. So, and the benefit of that, obviously, is that it would give us some stability in the rates and would let us, you know, lock in for a long, a good, you know, a long time. That's really basically four years from now. The next contract would expire December 1st of 2023.
So does this override the tail end of the contract we have existing now?
No, we would finish out that contract, and this pricing would start when that contract expired.
So the vote you're asking for is for us to vote to authorize Connor to enter into the agreement because we can't wait for posted meetings and, and this is like the stock market.
Exactly, yes.
So when your advisors and, and under your guidance, take a look at this and think today's the day, that's when we're going to.
Today is a good day to save some money, right? So, yeah, because of the volatility of the market, it, and this is our, this board has made practice of this. So we would ask for you would vote to execute or vote to authorize my execution of an electric supply purchase for our municipal accounts.
And this is similar to what we do with the natural gas contract. It's the same thing. Prices change daily, so we need to, you know.
Strike while the iron's hot.
Strike when the iron's hot.
Where, where is the natural gas contract?
Uh, we just did that in, was that, was that in August?
I think it was within the past year.
I feel like we did that in August. Yeah, we, I believe we did that in August.
That's a three-year term.
And we did a three-year term for that.
Yeah, so for some context, I don't know how much people look at the supply on their home energy bill, but right now, for N-Grid residential, I think it's about 13.5 or almost 14 cents, so getting under nine cents. That also beats recent summer pricing as well. So that kind of stability and savings is really valuable for us.
How far out will they be willing to go out of curiosity? Is it three years, that's all they want to do? Or can you, in theory, go longer than three years?
I don't, can we go, I don't know, no longer than three years without a town meeting.
That's right. We, whether the company could, you, under, with certain exceptions carved into the law, the legislative body, in our case, town meeting, we need to authorize a contract for more than three years. So three is our.
If you do this yourself and you look for your own energy supplier, they'll give you different prices based on if you enter into 18 months, 36 months. So I think some of those go out, usually three years, I think, is.
We've gone farther from a corporate perspective. We blended and extended, so basically it enables you to, at times, scrap your current deal because you've committed to a multi-year past your current deal. Rarely, oftentimes, it's finish out your current term, then you get the next number of years. But we're just trying to figure out what the opportunities were to push the boundaries to try to save on the gas side, given the lows of the gas rate.
Right, yeah. We have done that in the past too with a blend and extend with some of our other contracts.
We'll, we'll take a look at the existing gas contract and see if there's opportunity there as well.
So you anticipate taking this rate now or are you going to play the, see what happens like you do in the stock market?
No, I, well, I hope you don't do that in the stock market, but general recommendation is to stick it in an account and let it do its job. But if it continues to be disadvantageous, we'll make, I would rather make a decision tomorrow that guarantees us the $20,000 savings than hold out and have it turn to a 10.
Right.
Because once it starts correcting, it's not, you know.
It'll happen fast.
Bitcoin situation.
All right. So would somebody like to make a vote to authorize the town administrator to execute an electric supply purchase agreement?
So moved.
Second.
That's Craig and Tom, all in favor.
Thank you.
Unanimous.
And just on that note, your next meeting, two weeks from now, we're going to have Colonial Power come back. I don't know if the board remembers. It's quite, been quite some time. Town meeting authorized the town to purchase aggregate supply for the entire community if it was advantageous. The board authorized me to do that, I think, in 2017. We have not done that yet because we haven't had a particularly great ability to do that. We're starting to get to the territory on indicative pricing from suppliers for residential for an aggregation that perhaps could save some money in the net, but I think it's kind of a jump ball, and it's a worthy conversation. So we're going to bring them back for your meeting in two weeks to talk more about energy and to see if that's something the board wants to continue to push on to possibly save some folks some money.
Thank you. Thanks, Wendy.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you, Wendy. So the last item on the agenda is minutes, but we don't have any minutes. That's why I was looking for the date. Okay. Town administrator notes?
I will be quick. I would like to congratulate the Easton Police Department. They were reaccredited last week, I think, February 4th. They were reaccredited and maintained their accredited status from Massachusetts Police Accreditation Commission, and they received that award at the Connor Center in Dover, Mass. That accreditation process is voluntary. It is long and vigorous. It involves internal self-review by our police department as well as an external assessment of the department's policing standards by commission of experts. It's considered the best measure for a police department to compare itself against established best practices around the country and in the region. The chief and I are extremely proud to once again have the department reaccredited to kind of reinforce that they maintain the highest standards of best practices in policing. And a special thanks to the accreditation managers within the department, Sergeant Co. and Sergeant Adams. So thank you to the department for that. Another shout-out for first responders. Obviously, we had some wind on Friday. I don't want to know what's going to happen when there's a hurricane with power outages at this rate, but we had some, some relatively significant outages across the Commonwealth. Easton had a good chunk of folks, it was Power Friday. Police, fire, and DPW were deployed on the weekend, working to try to support N-Grid's efforts to get us back online. Most people were by the end of the day Saturday. Unfortunately, some folks went without power until Sunday. But as always, thank you to all those folks for their work. You know, you never want to see a kind of weather event coming in as you drive home for the weekend because it's, you know, you know you're not actually going home for the weekend, but thank you to them. Senator Timmeltie also was calling us quite frequently, calling N-Grid, trying to help push them to be in the right places. So thank you to the senator as well. Voting, it's a really, 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 really busy year. I know we said that last year, but this infographic is very helpful. It's online. Please share it with everyone. There's a series of voter registration deadlines coming up, starting as soon as this Wednesday for, I think there are one, two, three, four, five Democratic exercises between now and town meeting. We have the presidential primary and the special state primary election for Precinct 6 on March 3rd, Tuesday, March 3rd. The voter registration deadline for the presidential primary is Wednesday night. I think we're open till 8:00. Then the, it's a special state election for that state seat on Tuesday, March 31st. The deadline there is March 11th. There is an annual town election on Tuesday, April 28th. Deadline there is April 8th. Then there's town meeting on May 18th. The deadline there is April 28th. So a ton of voter registration deadlines coming up. If anyone wants to participate, please make sure you're currently an active voter. And I think that was it.
That was enough.
Anybody else from the board?
I do not.
All right. Well, thank you very much. And on that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Craig and Tom, all in favor. Unanimous. Thank you, everyone.